Tacoma Park City Council to order. Look, please call the roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Here.
Councilmember Grimes.
Here.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
We don't have any additional agenda items for this evening. A couple of things to point out on upcoming meetings. Next Monday, October 1st, at 6:45, we have the swearing in of the new police chief, Alan Goldberg, and there will be a reception for him in the atrium from 7:00 to 7:30. And then at that, on that meeting next week, we have a presentation on the New Hampshire Avenue Streetscape standards, a work session discussion regarding Washington and Venice Hospital, the Land Use Committee, and the public process going forward. We have a discussion of vendor sales on private property, including hours of operation, and we have an update and discussion regarding various Tacoma Junction initiatives. Later that week, I think most of the council members will be going to the MML Legislative Conference, and that runs from Wednesday, October 3rd, to Saturday, October 6th. There will be no council meeting the following week, and then we will return on Monday, October 15th, with a public hearing on proposed adjustments to the salary and compensation of the council, and a present, let's see, a tentative presentation on the third redistricting option. Note tentative. And then also a tentative work session item on discussion, discussion of draft language to amend the charter and the code for the residency and advice and consent discussion. And then finally, on Monday, October 22nd, we have tentatively scheduled the discussion of the Safe Grow Zone Initiative. So that's a couple of things that I wanted to point out for upcoming meetings. We don't have anything for the record this evening, so we'll move to public comment for anybody who'd like to make any comments. And if you could please identify yourself and keep your comments to three minutes. Mr. Lovelace.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, your official peace delegate. I want to remind people that forty-three days and counting, countdown is moving, time's going by fast. Got to get out there and vote. Don't forget, everybody, I hope you're all registered, and I hope you're all coming out there planning on voting, because it's an important presidential election coming up, as I think you all know. So everybody who can hear my voice out there, in the council and outside the council, I want them to all register to vote and get out there and vote. And also, I'm curious, what is the deadline for registering to vote?
October 16th.
October 16th, remember that. That's the deadline, don't, don't blow it. You know, so come on out, register to vote by October 16th, that's the deadline. You heard the mayor. Come right from the horse's mouth. Just come on out and register. And also, I want to tell people, we had a wonderful time at the Troy Davis event last Friday night in DC. They moved it from Freedom Plaza to the St. Stevens Church, where we had several speakers on the death penalty, and also on innocent people who have been put to death, as well as Troy Davis's family was there, and I got a chance to meet them and talk with them about how we, Tacoma Park, you know, well, it's against the death penalty. We had passed a resolution, and I mentioned that to Troy Davis's family, and they were very grateful. So, and also, I wanted to tell everybody, remember, that issue is not dead yet. We've got to make sure we get rid of the death penalty. It's one of the peace issues. It's another form of warfare against the poor, and the black, and the minority. We cannot accept that in the United States as American citizens, we cannot accept it. Also, also, remember, October 7th, two Sundays from yesterday, two weeks from yesterday, it's going to be the Street Festival, and I want everybody to come on out, and to come on out, and tell all your friends to come on out, because Tacoma Park really knows how to put on a good, safe, clean, and sober party. You can come on out, and you'll see what I mean. I love that, I go there every year, and I want everybody to come out to there. You don't have to be living in just a Tacoma Park to come out to the festival. So anyway, but also, don't forget, remember November, November the 6th, that's the slogan. Remember November, come on out and vote, please. Like, my life may depend on it. Your Medicaid and your Medicare and all that may depend on it, so please, come out and vote, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, we'll move along to council comments. Councilmember Daniels Cohen.
Thank you, Mayor. There are a couple of really fabulous activities that are happening at Tacoma Park this Saturday, and probably a whole lot more, but these are the two that I know about. During the day on Saturday, there will be a wonderful self-guided walking tour of Ward 4. You can meet in the back parking lot of the community center between 11:00 a.m. and 12:15 p.m. See historic sites and the remnants of our wilderness. Believe it or not, there's remnants of our wilderness right over in Ward 4. Learn about our segregated past, and actually see the African-American school that still stands. Until Brown versus the Board of Education was passed by the Supreme Court in 1954, it was where all children of color went to school. There's so much more to see. Bring a picnic lunch, and eat along the way, maybe share it with some of the other people that are, that are doing the tour with you. The event is hosted by the newly formed Tacoma United for an Engaged City, and is funded by a grant from the Tacoma Foundation. This is your diverse community in action, and it's so, it's so in action on so many levels. Now, I can segue right into Saturday night, and I'm embarrassed to say, at this, at this speaking, the gentleman who's in charge of this particular function put out in his email the 28th, which is Friday, and the actual venue where it's being held put out the 29th. So it's either the 28th or the 29th. It's at the VFW 350. Is there anybody up here who knows anything about it? No? I sent an email out when I saw the, the two different dates. At any rate, either Friday night or Saturday night, it's a fundraiser for Tacoma Foundation, featuring Monkey Feathers at 6:30 and an 8:00 p.m. That, by the way, is a band. It's a two-edged approach, because it is for the benefit of Tacoma Foundation, and it shows off Tacoma Park's very own VFW in Ward 3. I believe there's a suggestion donation of $10. I also believe there'll be one of the fabulous food trucks on site. Those are not confirmed beliefs, however, just supposition. I'm not sure about all that. Even more important, and I've handed the flyer out about the Explore Tacoma to all the council members, that's, that's on Saturday. Even more important, and I'm going to continue to remind you, because this is my last time to do it, September is Emergency Preparedness Month. I've suggested having a family meeting and discussion to create an emergency plan. Now you need to have a kit. The following are the nine major items to have in the kit. The first four items will surely help you through a power outage of shorter duration. Know where the flashlights are. A manual, manual can opener, not a whole lot of people still have something, a can opener you can use with your little hand. A battery-powered radio and proper batteries to fit the radio specifically, and the flashlight. But you also need water and food for three days, and water is a gallon of water per person per day, it's a lot of water. Clothes, medication for humans and animals, a first aid kit, and basic hygiene items. These are things you don't think about without the electricity. You need soap, toilet paper, and a toothbrush. Stop by the Emergency Preparedness Committee booth at the Street Festival, I underline what Pat said, on October the 7th, and pick up a brochure with all these instructions in it. Gold stars, always got to have gold stars. Cub Scout-sized gold stars go to PAC 33 for a special and memorable United Nations Day of Peace candlelighting ceremony at Tacoma Park's own memorial park. If you pass by Philadelphia Avenue and at Maple about 7:00 p.m. last Friday night, you saw about twenty Cubs with their candles brightly lit and their parents right behind them. I was the big kid on the end. We sang a song, and Cub Master Bruce Anderson read the proclamation that Mayor Williams presented to him last Monday night to all the, to all the parents and the Cubs. It was very moving and inspirational, and no one got injured with fire of any kind. So that was even what was most exciting about it. Now, great gobs, great huge gobs of gold stars to, to the play lady, Pat Rumbaugh, for the Fourth Annual Play Day this past Saturday, in partnership with Tacoma Plays and the Recreation Department. And I think there was something about the city of Tacoma Park going on there as well. This is always fun and not to be missed Tacoma Park special event, and based on results, there were not too many of our children and our adults who missed it. What a great and fun way to integrate play into all of our lives. Gold stars to Pat Rumbaugh and all her mighty volunteers. She always opens up the space for each of us to have fun, no matter what our age. She is a great and positive person, and I cherish the opportunity to rub elbows with her. These are only a few of the exciting things that happen at Tacoma Park every week. Savor your sitting and hold it close to your heart. This is a really special place to live with wonderful and giving people of all ages all around you. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you, Mayor. A few comments. The first is that the Saskia Neighborhood Association is holding their election for their board tomorrow night in the Hydrangea Room at 7:30. So anyone in the Saskia neighborhood, which sort of stretches from Tacoma Junction over to Sligo Creek and along 410, Forest Park, over to New Hampshire Avenue, it's a fairly big neighborhood association, is welcome to attend that meeting. Membership dues, I think, are $10. And the association is also doing a raffle, tree raffle. That's the first item. The second item that I wanted to mention was with regard to our sidewalk policy and our sidewalk retrofit, our ADA retrofit work. And I spoke to some council members by email today, but one of the things that I plan to do is to, is to dig up and work with Public Works to look at the data layer that the Tool Study Group put together for us that looked at the condition of existing sidewalks with regard to their ADA accessibility issues, and frankly, just accessibility issues writ large. We have 41 miles of sidewalks, non-on-state highways, that were evaluated in that study. And I'd just like to get a better sense, because I'm hearing, I keep getting queries from constituents consistently, I'd just like to get a better sense for how the city's prioritizing individual sidewalks. And in particular, my goal is just to make sure that if there were sidewalks that came out as just being in horrible shape in the Tool Group study, that those sidewalks find some way to be nearer the, or near the top of the priority list. And I, and that may already be the case, and I just, so I just want to work with Public Works to, to confirm that. And my third comment concerns the city manager task force, the city manager selection committee, or a selection task force. And my understanding was that last week, and some other council members were present at that, at that meeting, there was the debate around the two issues that we have talked about on council, the advising consent provision, and then the residency requirements that we've talked about a couple of times. Those two issues came up for discussion by the, by the task force, and took up a significant amount of time. And my understanding from one of the three co-chairs of the task force is that Roger Schlegel, he continues to feel that this is an issue that could impede the work of the, of the task force. And so in the agenda packet for tonight, I had proposed a simple letter that the council could send to the task force, to either the three officers, or to the whole membership of the task force, or ask the city to provide to the task force, that would just clarify for the purposes of the task force's operation that they should consider these two issues resolved. Other council members may choose to speak to this in greater length, and whether, and exactly the nature of the portions of the issues that cause confusion, but from my perspective, this is, this is a council policy issue. They are important pieces of what we put in a solicitation for, for our new city manager, for the job advertisement, but I think we should handle those on the, on the council as opposed to letting them become issues that take up a lot of, a lot of the committee's time. And if, I expect some of you as well, some of the other council members as well, have heard from committee members about these issues, and it seems like there's still confusion. I had, I had thought, and spoke with the mayor over the weekend, that maybe it was resolved, but speaking to a couple of committee members who reached out to me last night suggested that it wasn't, so a letter would be helpful. So I just wanted to offer that for your consideration, and I think in the past, we've been able to send, to indicate our support for sending letters by sort of a, you know, just sort of going through council, the council, and figuring out whether we could do that, and giving instruction to the city to do that. So that's what I propose. Thank you.
Can I respond to that, to this point?
Um, yeah, in a second. First, Councilmember Siemens, and then Councilmember Grimes.
I thank you, and I thank Councilmember Mail for bringing this letter to us. I too had heard some about what took place at the city manager selection committee meeting, and, and I think this letter would certainly help to clarify matters so that the committee could focus on what we have appointed them to do, which is to help with the selection of the city manager. And I think this accurately reflects the position of the council as of last week, and I think it'd be very appropriate to give this clarification to the, to the committee. The other couple of things I wanted to mention, and Councilmember Daniels Cohen went through them quite well, but I still have to repeat, I encourage people to attend the Ward 4 walk. It's kind of a history walk through Ward 4, which will take place this coming Saturday, the 29th, at 11 o'clock. It leaves, it's a self-guided walking tour, so people can come here at about 11 o'clock in the morning to the back of the community center, and it's going to proceed on through Ward 4. It's, it's going to take a little bit of energy, because we do, the path does go down through the wooded valley, and then climbing back out up the wooden steps that have been built on the other side of the bank. But we do have vehicles provided for ADA compatibility, if you will, for any of the people that are not able to walk through the wooded valley. We'll have vehicles to take you over to Oswego Avenue, where you can start your walk at that point. There are a lot of interesting things. Councilmember Daniels Cohen mentioned a couple of them. You know, I think it's intriguing, it's going to also visit the site of the source of the first, Tacoma Park's first public drinking water system. So I look forward to seeing that. And then there is going to be a picnic, you know, two-thirds of the way through, and so I encourage people to, you know, bring some food, but I'll also tell you a secret, there's going to be some food there being cooked, so those who forget your package probably find something to eat on the way. So I look forward to seeing you there. And then lastly, I just also wanted to, I don't know if I'm allowed to give a gold star, but also compliment Pat Rumbaugh on the fantastic playful.
You can give a gold star.
Playful city day.
You're allowed.
It was, it was a fantastic event. It had a great turnout, good group of volunteers working there, and tons of kids. That's all. Thank you.
If you're going to give a gold star, sooner or later, you have to come up with one.
That's why I didn't really do it, you know, I just talked about it.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Mail, for the letter proposing a way to address the broad instruction to the city manager selection committee regarding the formulation of position description to be used in our city manager search. There is, I think, more significant substance to this letter than can be decided, than should be decided in proper parliamentary procedures by a straw vote. The substance of this letter is very germane to an issue that is slated for council consideration with full public comment in a resolution. And the, to me, the substance of the letter and the content of that resolution are sufficiently overlapping that the letter should be subject to the same public consideration and discussion, and opportunity to comment, as the resolution itself. So I think that this letter will not get sufficient public consideration and discussion with advance notice to the public of that consideration and discussion if we were to discuss it and vote on it this evening. Thank you.
Maybe we should consider suspending the committee then, until we're able to give them clear direction, rather than.
Well, I would actually counterpropose that we consider tabling the resolutions on residency and on ratification. I realize that that is probably a minority position, if anyone else on the council supports it at all, but in any case, the exchange that you and I, Councilmember Siemens, have had just in the last minute indicates that there is a need for full public discussion of these matters, with sufficient notice to the public to allow those who care to witness the discussion and perhaps send in their comments.
We'll continue council comment. Councilmember Smith.
I would like to remind everybody that Saturday, September 29th, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., Friends of Sligo Creek will have a Sweep the Creek. The organization will supply bags, gloves, and water. This is an opportunity for the community to come out and clean up the creek. But I would also like to weigh in on Councilmember Mail's letter. I do understand that my colleague, Councilmember Grimes, has brought up some issues, but if the council can go forward with presenting this letter to the committee and give them direction on how to proceed, I would support that.
Let me just step in here for a second. What I'd like to propose is that the subject of sending a letter to the committee be on the council agenda for next Monday night. The committee is not going to be meeting before next Monday night. That way, we can have an opportunity to address how we would like to give direction to the committee.
And I think that addresses Councilmember Grimes' concerns.
I believe so. So we'll put that on the agenda for Monday.
And that's why they made you the mayor.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I had the opportunity to attend the meeting Wednesday night, the first meeting, which was the organizational meeting of the city manager selection committee. There was a healthy turnout. My role in being there, along with several of the other city council members, was basically kind of to help give them guidance in their, in their launch, and to answer questions that they had. Part of the task of the, of the initial meeting was for them to select, it was, it was to get organized. I got there a few minutes late, and a conversation had already broken out, much to my kind of surprise, about this issue which is raised, which the several council members here were just talking about. And I thought it was important to note that before the end of the discussion of that committee, and I guess it was probably about 20 of the 27 members that were present, so there were several people who were absent for their first meeting. A very strong effort was made to try to draw a distinction or a line between separating out members, individual members' feelings about the merits of these ideas, and the, and the, as opposed to whether they were for or against it was not, they didn't really want to have a conversation about the idea, because they well know that that's not their decision, it's our decision. But to focus more on what the, on the role, what it would mean, or why not to have clarification on this issue going forward. And it was basically agreed that that was not something that they could resolve at their first meeting, as to whether or not the committee, basically, the question was among committee members, knowing that there's uncertainty with regard to the residency requirement and the proposed decision on appointments of department heads, the, the, there was a lack of resolution on it, and they agreed to accept the fact temporarily that there was a lack of resolution pending the city council's direction. So that is sort of, issue is hanging fire, and until such time is the city council's able to give them direction. I don't know what the, the committee is going to do. I'm not part of that committee, I was simply there as an observer, but I think it's important to acknowledge that it was something that a lot, a lot of people had a lot of opinions on, all over the place, and, and some people were concerned that they were not cognizant of these two possible changes that were pending before the council. So I just want to say, just say that to kind of, just so that people understand what is going on with the city council selection committee. Not saying anything with regard to predictiveness on this whole thing, or what their next steps should be, or what our, what our next steps will be, which we'll talk about at next, next week's city council meeting. But I felt it was important to add, shed some light for those who are listening to this city council meeting and wondering what, what perhaps may be going on. So stay tuned, and we'll see how it's all going to work out. Thank you.
And I'll just add a couple of quick thoughts on that. The, this topic that people have just been referring to came up at the selection committee meeting very early on. When I was kind of making introductory remarks, I wanted to get through that discussion in order to be able to let the committee establish their own leadership and their own processes. But there were a number of people who talked at good length about this topic. When the leadership of the committee was selected, and they were meeting after the meeting, they were trying to figure out the best way for the committee to proceed with the task that we had given them, and their intention was to have the committee talk about what we had tasked them with, and take the position that any continuing discussion, any opinions by committee members or anybody else in the public about these topics should most properly be directed through our city council meeting processes. And there was just some, a, a lack of comfort, of comfort about being sure that everybody understood the degree of uncertainty in the process of us going forward, and how that might affect what they need to do to help us with the first task that we directed them to do, which was to help us come up with what we're looking for in the city manager. So they just wanted clarity on this, so that they could be sure that they could help us in that first task, and not get distracted by the process that we're going through. So we will take that up next week. I have a couple of things that I just wanted to mention. Councilmember Schultz and I went to the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter Meeting last week in Rockville. There was an interesting presentation by two people from the Montgomery County Council Office of Legislative Oversight. They talked about their various projects, their FY13 work program, and one of them is municipal tax duplication and revenue sharing, and it was an opportunity for officials in Montgomery County municipalities to talk with them about what they might be doing during this year in assisting and helping the county council's government operations committee and their review of the task force's final report. And this was an opportunity for making sure that all of us, as municipal officials, know that that office is undertaking that study, and they were saying they are, it's a neutral study, they're not taking one position or another, they wanted to provide as much information to, as possible to the county council, and provide opportunities for us as municipal officials to give them any information that we thought was important, pertinent, and would help in understanding that issue. So that's an ongoing request, and we have contact information for the Office of Legislative Oversight, and we can provide additional information on tax duplication. of Legislative Oversight, and we can provide additional information on tax duplication as that goes forward at the county council. Other things that came up at that meeting were that the -- there was a request, an early request this year, for the chapter's legislative luncheon that has taken place the last couple of years in Annapolis in March, and a request from municipalities to make donations toward the cost of that luncheon. And the suggested donation level was $250. And they wanted to make sure that their request went in early so that towns and cities could consider that and see if we could come up with that. And I think it would be good to do that in the past. I think maybe the city contributed once. One of our now departed colleagues on the city council made personal donations in other years to cover that cost for the city. And it's a good way to do this. In the past, the city spent much more than that to do our own legislative luncheon, but this cooperative effort among all the municipalities in Montgomery County has had real good effects. And for a donation of $250 toward the cost of that is a real good way to go. And a final thing from that meeting was that the legislative, the chapter legislative dinner, which happens every year in December, is going to be December 13th. So if my colleagues want to put that on your calendars, that's the second Thursday rather than the usual third Thursday of the month for those meetings. I want to add my thanks to Pat Rumbo and all the volunteers who made Play Day happen. I know that there were way more people than there had been in the previous ones, and it was a great time. And I got to also touch a truck. I did not, however, contribute to the cacophony of the horns.
You didn't?
No, I didn't.
That's no fun.
I have my own trucks with their own horns. I can go do that at home if I need to. I also was part of the host committee last night for an event in Kensington, which was part of the Maryland Letters for Marriage Equality. And it was a lot of people there and a great time. The governor, Lieutenant Governor, various other people were there. And it was also a showing of a very interesting film called Gen Silent, and it was about issues of aging gay, lesbian, bisexual, and transgender people in this country and the efforts, the problems that they face in potentially going into places like nursing homes and assisted living and living their lives as they have before that, but being in a position where they're vulnerable to the actions by caregivers and how they deal with those issues. So it was a very interesting film. And finally, I just wanted to point out that I will be going this week to the Local Government Advisory Committee on the Chesapeake Bay Quarterly Meeting in Shepherdstown. I will be there Thursday and Friday of this week. And I think that's it for council comments. Does the city manager have any comments?
Yes, I have several. I want to acknowledge publicly that the stormwater bills went out in the mail on Friday. I know a number of people have received them. The amount is higher this year. It went from $48 per year to $55 per year. We've already received many contributions to our emergency fund, even as a result of that, so we appreciate that. If -- the major reason that the price was increased was to pay a portion of the new special projects coordinator position for Public Works that will help expedite a number of the projects. Following up on the mention that the mayor made of our new police chief being sworn in next Monday at 6:45, I just wanted to mention that interim Chief Drew Tracy will remain on staff through next Friday to facilitate the transition. Not to say that they haven't been having a lot of discussion up until now, but officially, he will -- Chief Tracy will stay for a few days.
So there'll be a one-week overlap?
That's correct. In terms of activities going on this week, audits are continuing. You might have seen the city manager's office being occupied for the last couple of weeks. Auditors have been located there. They'll be there through Thursday and then continuing to work offsite. I understand that the council members have received this related party questionnaire, and it's a little bit of a confusing item, but the point is to find out if you have been treating issues fairly that come before the city and impartially. If you've got some questions, either I can help you, or we can have you talk directly to the auditors to get direction on how to complete that form.
Will we all get those questions?
Yes.
Yes.
It's in your mailbox.
I got it. I filled you that free chart.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Just to follow up on the ADA sidewalk work, the Public Works Director has looked over the priorities of -- that were in the original tool design analysis, which, as you mentioned, does not cover state highways, sidewalks. Nevertheless, she'll be able to give a report on how we've done in each of the three tiers of priorities of those. She sent that to me today, but something a little bit more explicit will be shared with the council. We did receive our highway user revenue estimates for this fiscal year and the next fiscal year in the mail today, slightly lower than we had projected by about $2,000, but very close. These are estimates, so we'll wait and find out exactly what the calculations are. But the amount that we received today was about $84,000. The announcement of how much we'll receive for fiscal year 13 was about $84,000. My top priority for this week is getting a comprehensive schedule of city work projects compiled so that I can share it with you and with the public. As I talked with Council Member Mail on Friday, I'd need this for me to see when everything's going on, but I think it's also will address many of the questions that you and your constituents raise. So that's something I want to get out this week, if I can. I'm also focusing on the new website. And if you'll notice, it's kind of in a transition mode right now, and we're really trying to move quickly. So those are our top priorities.
Thanks. We'll move on to adoption of minutes, and we have two sets of minutes from April 19th and July 30th. Would somebody like to move adoption?
Move second.
It's been moved in second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are adopted. We'll next go to our public hearing, and this is a public hearing on the Community Development Block Grant Program. And I guess Linda Walker is going to say a few words to introduce this, to make sure that people know a little context.
Yes. On behalf of Sarah Danes, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to solicit comments from the community regarding the city's Community Development Block Grant Program, and also to identify the needs of low-to-moderate-income households and neighborhoods. As you probably know, Tacoma Park annually receives CDVG funds from the county. And for fiscal year 2014, and that would be programs starting between July 13th running through June -- I'm sorry, July of 2013 through June of 2014, we're estimating that we will receive about $115,000 from the county. And 15% of that, or approximately $17,250, is for community or public service projects, and the rest goes toward capital improvement projects. So we announced the availability of the funds on August 6th, and the deadline for filing the application was actually today at 4:00 p.m. We received a record 12 applications for the funds. Among the community service requests are a leadership and empowerment program for young women, a business development assistance and loan program for small businesses, emergency food program, a scholarship program for recreation programs, a support program for seniors, a homework and play and learn program, therapeutic program for at-risk middle school students, an emergency food and clothing program, a job assessment and training program, and a micro enterprise development in the local food network. Those were the programs that were for community service requests. And of those programs, the request for all the programs together is $88,663. So the review committee is going to have quite a challenge in deciding which one of these applications gets the $17,250. In the capital improvement request area, there are two applications for exterior home repair programs, and those applications total $112,000. So the review committee will be meeting next week on October 2nd, and its recommendation will be presented to the council on the 15th of October.
So would anybody like to testify at the public hearing? The public hearing is now open. Do we have a sign-up sheet?
I didn't.
Oh, okay. Good. Thank you. Thank you.
Then you'll be last.
I'll be first and last. That's right. So my name's Lord Charcutian. I live on Ethan Allen Avenue. I'm here more or less in my capacity as a board member of Crossroads Food Network, which is one of those 12 applications. It seems like it is a very difficult decisions that are going to have to be made, and it's reflective of challenging financial times we live in and a lot of need. So the Crossroads Food Network application that's going to come before you at some point soon is for the micro enterprise development specific to local food system, micro enterprises. And what I want to highlight in the need for it is that CHEER recently did a strategic planning process with the community. And to some extent, that process was to inform CHEER's activities, but it was also to inform the elected officials and other community leaders about what community members think the needs are. And it was a very thorough process. It involved several public conversations. And one of the things that continually came up as a priority in this process was the need for building economic opportunities. So not -- the job training was an important piece of it, but making jobs available at a local level was a really important piece of it, and finding ways to build jobs. And so that's where I think the micro enterprise development piece of it comes in. And so I would just highlight the need to really look at how do we create local wealth. And one of the ways to create local wealth is to support really small-scale, low-income individuals to develop their own businesses. In particular, I would highlight that doing it within the context of the local food system has additional benefits, because it has the environmental benefits of enhancing the local food system is also better for the broader environmental impact that it has. And then potentially, as we connect farmers and farmers markets with local individuals who want to create value-added products, it can improve the local agricultural system and also hopefully create more fresh, locally available foods. And so it has health benefits as well. So I'm hoping that as you're making these really hard decisions that the committee's going to have to make, and then ultimately you're going to have to make, that you'll keep in mind both the CHEER's strategic planning process and the need to create these economic employment opportunities and economic opportunities, as well as the potential additional benefit of supporting the local food system.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else who didn't sign up who wants to testify at the public hearing about the Community Development Block Grant Funds? Okay, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to our regular meeting agenda. And we have one voting item, and that's second reading ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a payment in lieu of taxes agreement with Community Preservation and Development Corporation for Essex House. Would somebody like--
Would you like to move it?
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any council comments? We had various presentations on this discussion, and we had first reading. This is second reading, and we'll bring this item to conclusion. Any public comment on this payment in lieu of taxes agreement? Seeing none, it's a second reading ordinance. Will the court please call a roll?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Council Member James Bell?
Yes.
Council Member Grimes?
Aye.
Council Member Mail?
Aye.
Council Member Schultz?
Aye.
Council Member Siemens?
Aye.
Council Member Smith?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thank you. We will now move to work session, and our first work session item is a discussion memorandum of understanding with State Highway Administration regarding Maryland 410.
I was expecting Sue Silver here to introduce the sign.
Okay. Well, we're a couple of minutes early.
That's unprecedented.
Tell you what, while we're waiting a few minutes for the city attorney to be here, why don't we go to the next -- well...
You could do a legislative chunk.
Yeah, I'm wondering. I don't think that's going to take a half an hour.
I haven't gotten a long list here, so...
Okay, so why don't we do that one? We'll move to item number four on the work session agenda, which is discussion of local legislative agenda.
I was interrupting to ask whether anyone is sending a message to Sue Silver.
Ah, she's right here.
Oh, good. Then we won't go to that one. We'll go right back to--
You're on board.
We just missed it.
We were ready to go to another agenda item, but you made it in the nick of time.
First, I apologize. I cut it too close. So as you know, this agenda item is the culmination of a very long amount of negotiation, discussion, research, and work to come up with a memorandum of understanding with the State Highway Administration concerning the use of Route 410. There have been many different stages of these negotiations, times when the state claimed that it had no responsibility to maintain the road, to a complete 180 now where they agree that and acknowledge that they have full responsibility to bear the maintenance costs and to fully maintain the road as part of the state highway system. As you can see in the cover sheet and in the attached MOU, we have tried to work out the coordination and consultation that the city has for its interests along the road, and some of the improvements since the last version of this MOU that you have seen include a better promise to work with us on the signalization at Tacoma Junction, a better procedure for handling utility permit cuts, a grandfathering, although it's not perfect, but a fairly good grandfathering of all of our crosswalks along 410. And the sidewalks and stormwater have not changed much, but I think the overall relationship has improved to one in which we will be able to give comment before the state takes action. And the state also has a responsibility to respond to us before they take action, except in cases of emergency. And so not only do we have that kind of coordination relationship, but we also have a lot of clarity about who has responsibility for what. One of the problems in the past has been a great deal of ambiguity, not only over maintenance, but over some of these other areas, so that when we -- some of our constituents have wanted to make sure that, for example, their potholes were fixed, they weren't sure where to go or who to hold, whose feet to hold to the fire. This MOU makes it very clear who is responsible for what and our role in that relationship. But I'm open to any questions of the council.
If you can say a bit more about the ownership and the change that took place, because State Highway for a number of years now has been saying that we owned the road, they didn't own the road, and now, all of a sudden, we do have, it appears, I don't know what the word, confirmation that they own it. Can you say a little bit more about kind of what they found or what that is and what it means?
Sure. First of all, I wouldn't use the word ownership. What we now have is an acknowledgement that Tacoma Park's part of 410 has been part of the state highway system back to the '30s. And in 1934 in particular, there was-- And in 1934 in particular, there was a plan that mapped out every segment of the road that was to become part of the state highway system. And there was a small conveyance, a formal conveyance done at that time, just for the area around City Hall here, where a playground was being replaced basically by a segment of the road, and the city was actually paid $2,000 for that small segment. But at the same time, in 1934, when the city was paid for that small segment, the city also agreed or consented or acknowledged that the full plan going through the whole city was a good one, and they supported it, and the county did the same. The reason I don't use the word ownership is that it really is a question of dedicated right-of-ways that had been dedicated from private parcels for the use of the public right-of-way over many, many, many years. And most of those didn't say they were dedicated to Tacoma Park, they didn't say they were dedicated to Montgomery County, Prince George's County, or the state, they just were dedicated to the public use. And if at any time in history 410 stops being a state highway and we stop needing it for a local right-of-way, it in fact would revert to those private property owners. So I'm not, I don't think it's helpful to talk about it in terms of ownership. But what's clear is it's been part of the state highway system for many, many, many years, and that along with it being part of the state highway system, the state really does have a great deal of authority about how to use it and how to make sure it's kept in a certain condition, and that it can be used for a major thoroughfare between different parts of both counties and within the state. So there is some disagreement. I've talked to the attorney for Historic Tacoma about whether ownership is critical. It is true that we can't show, and I don't think it's important that we do, that we have actually, Tacoma Park has actually signed a conveyance for every segment of the road over to state highway. There isn't such a trail of formal conveyances. What there is, is this plan that was done in 1934 that says we approve of it being a plan that state highway will have this control over this road. The word ownership is not that helpful.
Is that 1934 agreement, discussion, whatever it was, similar to the way that State Highway normally establishes a state highway, or is it different? Is it different? If it's different, is it different because it was done that long ago and they've changed procedures in terms of how they do it?
Well, there's definitely been a change of procedures, but the law also has an ambiguity, and that is that it is very clear that if the right-of-way is being taken or bought from private owners, there has to be condemnation, there has to be a paid conveyance. It is not as clear that that applies from one segment of government to another. And frankly, I think it's a run-on sentence, and it depends how you read where the comma is as to whether public entities are treated the same as private entities for that purpose. So I think actually one could, you know, listening to the attorney for Historic Tacoma, I think you could make an argument that it's got to be treated just like the private owner, and there has to be formal conveyance, and therefore we would have to go through that process now, even though the roadway has been acting like a state highway for so many, so many, many years. Or that we would have to grant an easement now because, you know, they can't get controlled unless we convey some type of property interest. I'm not sure where it gets us. I don't think that the bottom line is that we get anything from it, because anybody in the chambers here and anybody in the community knows that a state highway is a state highway is a state highway. It has been acting, operating like a state highway even before 1934, you know, back into the early '30s. And I think that the only question is sort of how do we work out this kind of coordination that we're trying to do in this MOU? I don't think it's necessary to prove that we need to have formal conveyances or formal easements to do that. And obviously, the state agrees with that because that's what they're now acknowledging, that they have full maintenance responsibility. That's why they're saying they're willing to start patching even if they don't have this MOU signed. They realize that it is their obligation.
And they're going to reimburse us for all the money that we've had to put in because they didn't do it?
I think we have not had that part of the negotiation, but councilmember, if you think that should be part of the negotiation, we certainly can go back and see what we can do about that. Certainly, they haven't offered to reimburse us.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. Thank you, Ms. Silver. I found your distinction between ownership and the acquisition and holding of a right-of-way, and perhaps ownership of a roadway versus ownership of the land, which you didn't state, I found that to be very informative and germane. So I also want to thank the city staff who have been involved in the reopened negotiations with the State Highway Administration. I believe it was since May that the city council last took up this issue, and that includes Ms. Silver, Public Works Director Darrell Braithwaite, Acting City Manager Suzanne Ludlow, and former city manager Barb Matthews. And in addition, great thanks are owed to members of the community and other individuals who have taken part in discussions in this issue. I note that we have comments from three individuals here, and then I've heard from, I should say, from Sally Tabor, Lori Charcutian, and Sachin Iklekalsa. And I've had comment directly from a number of people in the ward that I represent. In particular, I want to call out for thanks Representative Delegate Heather Mazur and her aide Jeremy Crandall, who's here today to witness the discussions. I don't believe he will have any remarks, but Heather's attention to this issue has been very helpful in ensuring that the state parties to the agreement that we're working on have approached this with special diligence. And then in addition, Historic Tacoma, I see a number of representatives of Historic Tacoma Incorporated in the audience this evening. I will ask Mayor Williams to call on two representatives, Lorraine Pierceall and Michelle Rosenfeld, who's Historic Tacoma's attorney, for comment on this issue. I do have a number of comments myself, so--
Sure, I'll be happy to do that. We'll take council comments first.
At the appropriate time, yeah. So, yeah, I do note that the council has discussed a prior, not very different version of the draft MOU that we have before us tonight in closed session because of the legal nature of the discussions on September the 10th, and that the MOU has not been available for public scrutiny. I guess that's the second time I'm hitting on that issue before a couple of days ago or for public discussion. I do note also that the material that we have in front of us this evening is incomplete in two ways. One, we have not been provided, by we I mean the council and the public, the 1934 documentation that is cited in the cover materials and in the resolution itself. I think that any fully informed discussion of this draft memorandum of understanding should include scrutiny of those materials. And I thank councilmember Maal for first pointing out that we have not yet been provided those 1934 materials. In addition, there's nothing in these documents that I've seen that describes the cross-section of the right-of-way. We know the extent from one end to the other of the right-of-way, but not the cross-section. In that regard, I note the letter transmitted to the city of Tacoma Park from former State Highway Administrator Neil Peterson dated April 12, 2011. Before the start of this meeting, I provided a copy of that letter to councilmembers. It is available online. In any case, the first item that former Administrator Peterson has in this issue reads this way, "SHA, State Highway Administration proposes the following resolution." The first item is, "The city would retain any right-of-way, any rights-of-way it owns outside the curb lane of the existing roadway along Philadelphia and Ethan Allen Avenues." This language is not reflected in the memorandum of understanding. Is there a good reason it is not there, and can it be included there? It is a commitment made by former Administrator Peterson in writing, and the state should live up to that commitment, that the city would retain any rights-of-way it owns outside the curb lane of the existing roadway along Philadelphia and Ethan Allen Avenue. Ms. Silver, if you'd like to respond to that, that's fine, or I can go on if not at this moment.
I'll wait and respond perhaps to a group of things.
Okay. There were a number of other related points that I brought up in closed session, and the council didn't at that time want to move forward with them, but I will mention them again. They include-- Excuse me. They include under, I guess you'd call the section two, Roman numeral two, number B, item B, that SHA will be responsible for grass mowing, tree trimming, and bush trimming. These are items outside the curb lane, and I would have preferred to see those items struck from the memorandum of understanding. In addition, I had not brought this forward before, but I was reminded of it by representatives of Historic Tacoma. Section seven sidewalks does not include any notification to be provided to the city in the event that the State Highway Administration does propose to install any sidewalks along the extent of 410. That would be notification, and then per the pattern of language in the remainder of the MOU, the right of the city to respond, and the SHA must respond to the city's response to that notification. Okay. Based on a citizen remark, I would propose under section 10, general provisions, paragraph F, that we ask that the SHA's response to the city comments be in writing. I would like to see us add the words "in writing" in that. The SHA will review the city's comments and respond in writing. That seems very reasonable to me. I think that's it for me for the moment, and I'm sure that other parties who will comment, whether it's councilmembers or Historic Tacoma representatives, will bring up other points. Thank you.
City attorney want to respond to those four points?
I think the only one I would respond to is the question about the width and how much sort of roadway or right-of-way the city wants to control or manage as compared to what state highway manages. Generally, the right-of-way for state highways, I think, is the full right-of-way, which includes often 40 feet, 50 feet. And the advantage to the city of it being the wider area is that they then do assume some of the expenses as to the tree maintenance and the mowing, just the points that you made, councilmember, but seeing it from the opposite side--
Sure.
--that it makes it less expensive for the city to maintain those areas.
I think it's widely recognized that the city has much higher standards of maintenance in a number of regards, particularly where trees are concerned, than other governing jurisdictions do. So we pay higher taxes here in Tacoma Park for that level of scrutiny by city staff to reflect our ethos, for instance, in protection of trees. And personally, I don't have any problem with that expense, additional expense, if the city is responsible for things like trees, and I believe that my constituents wouldn't either.
Just without disagreeing, I just want you to know that there's a long history about that question.
There always is.
I've had a number of court cases where that was the issue, whether the city had control or whether state highway had control, long before we got into this particular negotiation. And certainly, state highway for many, many years has stated that it preempts and has authority over the right-of-way as a whole, including the trees. We've argued that we at least have control over certain, you know, urban forest trees, and we've argued that we have control over curb cuts, but it's been, it's not been as simple in any sense.
Yeah, that, I'll stop, but after one more remark. That's why the inclusion in this latest version of the MOU in most sections, but not every single one where it belongs, I mentioned sideways, of not only city comment, but SHA mandated response to city comment is so important. And that's where I would again ask that we modify the language to include the words "in writing" for their response.
Yeah, I didn't address that, but actually I think that is a very good point.
Thank you.
And if I can just follow up on one aspect of councilmember Grimes' questions. I was wondering about where the, in the blue cover sheet, I'll just reference where it talks about stormwater, and SHA will remain responsible for managing stormwater on its roadway and its existing stormwater management facilities, including pipes and inlets. And I'm wondering how that relates to any potential language about kind of the curb line and owns, with his reference to point one in the letter about the city retaining rights-of-way it owns outside the curb lane, and how that whole stormwater section would relate to that if there were a feeling that we wanted to go there.
Yeah, I agree that the definition of the width would affect that stormwater section.
So that, if we wanted to go that direction, that would need to be reconciled?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Maal.
Could you just clarify what would need to be reconciled there?
If we wanted to go the direction that councilmember Grimes was proposing about including language about the city maintaining--
Everything outside--
--kind of rights to the right-of-way outside the curb line, then that would mean that we had stormwater, the stormwater part of that infrastructure, which tends to be outside the curb line.
Got it.
Okay. Did you have other--
I do, yeah. So two points, thank you. One is just in relation to this in writing provision under the utility permit section. Similarly, that would be helpful there. If the agreement stays as it is and SHA has what sounds like this precedent of having rights within the whole right-of-way, then why is it that sidewalks would be maintained by us?
Because there's a separate statute about sidewalks that is, you know, there's a whole section on sidewalks in the state code, and the responsibility is given--
Enough said.
--to the local governments for the sidewalks.
Okay, thank you.
It's very clear, and, you know, the exception is when they're building new ones compared to when they're maintaining old ones, but it is very, it's in statute, those distinctions.
Great, thank you.
And let me just add that that distinction is only a recent distinction. I don't know whether the statute's been around a long time, but it was news to municipalities that municipalities had to maintain sidewalks on state highways, and in fact, that's why those sidewalks weren't included in the tool design study of our sidewalk.
Because it wasn't clear at the time.
Because we didn't know we were supposed to maintain those.
My last comment concerns the signalization provision, and a resident who was here actually earlier, Lori Charcutian, pointed this out, that it sets up a provision whereby if funding is provided at the state or local level by the end of fiscal year 2013, then SHA will do the work to make the transfer to the county of the junction lines possible by the end of 2015. And that's a long time from now. And I just wonder if that conversation was really deliberate, if it was debated back and forth in the negotiation and discussion on this, or if there's any way to move that up or to qualify it in some way. For example, moving it up would be FY14, qualifying it would be, you know, SHA shall make every effort to complete the upgrades as soon as possible after funding is made available, but no later than the end of FY15.
I don't know how much give there is in that. This was definitely something that I remember at the table, we asked them about, you know, how much time do you really need for the analysis that'll lead to the decision whether you're going to do the funding? And we asked them about funding cycles. I remember, you know, some back and forth on that, but I think the fair thing to say is that if the council prioritizes-- is that if the council prioritizes wanting us to push for that to be sooner, we could try that. I think they were fairly deliberate with this timing.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. Going, looking at the M O U number two, and it lists the requirements that S H A is supposed to perform. If, for whatever reason, S H A can't do it, and the city has to do it, will the city be reimbursed for those expenses?
For which thing in particular?
It says that S H A will, you know, snow removal, graffiti removal, if S H A can't do it, for whatever reason, and the city does it.
That's a really good question. I think, just as I answered Councilmember Seaman's question earlier, that we weren't expecting to get reimbursement, in that case, we probably don't expect to get reimbursement. What we expect to do is to hold their feet to the fire and make sure they do what they say they're going to do.
Okay.
Any other council comments at this point? Okay, then I'd like to invite Historic Tacoma representatives to talk to us about your perspective on this.
Michelle Rosenfeld here on behalf of Historic Tacoma. I do have some documents that I would like to hand out. I apologize for not having enough copies for everybody. I only got some of these a couple of hours ago, but it might help if you could share them and take a look at them as I go through them.
Sure. And if it helps you, there's a switch there that'll lower that podium if it's too high for you.
Okay, thank you.
On the front left of the desk surface there.
As with the county attorney, I would like to start with 1934, because I do think that that is a very critical period of time in taking a look at who actually has control over the municipal portions of Maryland 410, and whether or not, at that time, those segments were incorporated into the state system. And you see here on the top of the packet, a letter from July 24, 1934, acknowledging that the city has sold a portion of what's called a municipal playground, which in fact was sold to State Highway as, to be incorporated and built as a road as a portion of 410. The next page includes minutes from that decision, and it specifically references the construction drawings for specific sheets for the very project that has been identified as the project that conveyed the control of the entirety of 410 within Tacoma Park to the State Highway Administration. The following pages are some of the excerpts from those construction drawings, and the first, in fact, I think has some of the cross-sections, just coincidentally, that had been referenced. But more interesting, from my point of view, are the next several pages, and you'll, you will see highlighted on there, there's a section of Philadelphia Avenue, and over, above that, there's text that says, "No work to be done within these limits." And then, as you move forward across the following pages, it continues through Philadelphia Avenue, again, "No work to be done within these limits," and then there's a segment that clearly work will be done, and that coincides with some of the plats that State Highway has that confirms that there was public dedication to State Highway along that intersection with Maple Avenue. Then you continue on to the following pages, and it goes, carries through 410, what used to be called Denwood Avenue, and on through to Carroll Avenue, and again, it says, "No work to be done within these limits." And then you carry through to Ethan Allen Avenue, "No work to be done within these limits." And what these documents, to my mind, confirm is the fact that, at the time that this 1934 project was undertaken, those municipal segments of Maryland 410 were not included in the scope of this project. State Highway did no work along 410 within those segments, and there appears to have been consensus between State Highway and the city in 1934 that these segments, in fact, were not part of the State Highway Maryland 410 system. If you flip forward several pages to what's tab two, you will in fact see a memorandum dated April of 2009, and its research performed by State Highway Administration, and at the bottom, there is a summary that explains that the portions of Philadelphia Road and Ethan Allen, in fact, were excluded from the very project that was undertaken in 1934, and there had been a request as to whether or not they had ever been transferred to Tacoma Park or to State Highway Administration, and the concluding sentence is, "These sections were never transferred to Tacoma Park from the S H A since they were never S H A roads." So you see this continuity. There's, there's a number of other documents during those intervening fifty or sixty years that confirm this, but from the beginning point to this very recent 2009 document, it's clear to me that these remained municipal roads. So, the question becomes, why is this important? This is important because if it's not part of the State Highway system and remains under municipal control, then by all means, you can have an agreement with State Highway for State Highway to do the maintenance that it seeks to do, and which would ensure consistency in terms of how the road is maintained. But what becomes far more critical is what happens outside of the roadbed itself. The question was asked, what about sidewalks? What about tree maintenance? Well, that remains under municipal control along these rights-of-way, these segments of rights-of-way. Why would it not be in the city's interest to give State Highway unilateral access for sidewalks, for tree clearing, et cetera? Because over time, there will come a period when some other administration will be before you arguing that State Highway has acquired a prescriptive easement along the boundaries, and so it may be that they would look to widen the road. It may be that they would look to undertake more work within those rights-of-way than you would care to see performed. And if you relinquish that control, then it potentially erodes the city's autonomy and governance of those rights-of-way in the future. So if you have an easement agreement that gives the State Highway Administration a perpetual maintenance agreement within the roadbed, you identify by meets and bounds the boundary of what State Highway has authority to do, and then the city can allow the State Highway Administration to do tree maintenance, to do sidewalk repair, to do all kinds of work, the stormwater management, but subject to a right-of-entry agreement between the city and the State Highway Administration. That would ensure that the scope of whatever work State Highway does along the boundaries of these municipal segments would be done with the approval in the concurrence of the city. So, in my mind, there's a very important distinction as to whether or not you actually consider these segments to now be under State Highway control, or whether or not they remain under city control. And I say, under the governing documents from 1934, it's clear that, in fact, these portions of Maryland 410 have never been incorporated into the state road system. There are a number of items that were referenced in Neil Peterson's letter that are not in the current maintenance agreement, and certainly, it seems to me that if State Highway was willing to make these, to adhere to these terms, regardless of who has ownership, that they certainly should be incorporated into the M O U at this time. So, from my point of view, the city is in a position to ensure control over the adjoining rights-of-way because you still have control over the road itself. And even if not, even if parties disagree on that issue, certainly, State Highway should honor the commitments that it made in 2011, in the, in the Neil Peterson letter of 2011. And I had, at the request of Historic Tacoma, made revisions to a prior draft of the maintenance agreement, and incorporating and reconciling those prior commitments from State Highway, and a copy of that is included in your packet as well. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. I, I want to give the city attorney a chance to say anything that she might want to say in response to your remarks, but one, one thing that I want to make sure that I understand, when you were pointing out the various pages that have the designations with "no work to be done within these limits," I want to make sure I understand what that, the possibilities of what that means and your interpretation of that.
Certainly.
Because it's, if I was looking at that, a question that would come to my mind is, well, was that talking about for, for whatever project there was at that point, no work was to be done within those areas during that particular project? Or is it a more, I take it you're interpreting it as a more permanent, long-range designation of things, and I wonder how that, how that gets at your description of what this is?
Certainly. These, these are the construction documents that are referenced in the minutes of the mayor and council meeting of, of January 1934. And these are the documents that have been cited as the basis for S H A's claim that these segments of roadway have been incorporated into the state road system. And under this project, State Highway did not perform work in these segments of the road. So, at that time, in my view, State Highway did not incorporate these segments into the state road system. Since that time, there have been multiple pieces of correspondence from State Highway as individual property owners would ask if State Highway had an interest in these segments, and they would say, "No, we only have control over the plats that were dedicated at the time directly to State Highway." Some very limited intersection improvements, and, for example, the piece for the municipal playground. So, this having been referenced as the benchmark for when State Highway says these were incorporated, I don't think it was incorporated at that time, and I have not seen anything subsequent to that that would suggest that it was incorporated later.
Thank you. Comments?
I would simply say that, obviously, lawyers can disagree on many things, and that Ms. Rosenfeld was given these documents by me, and I appreciate her having shared her thoughts about them with you. I reached some different conclusions when I studied them. I think that the full range of 410 was part of this plan in 1934, and yet, there was not construction done on every part of the, of the full roadway, but the full plan was clearly, that is clearly what the city council at the time approved, not just the specific parts that would be constructed at that time. But, but I am sure there are ways to, there are, there's the ability to argue this from different sides. In terms of former Administrator Peterson's letter, I agree with you, it, it offered certain things, but it was not a contract. Nobody in S H A has stood behind that at this time. It was really more of a opening shot in a negotiation, not by any means something that ever made it to a contract or to some kind of legal document that could be relied on or could be enforced. And I agree, if we could go back and Peterson was still in that office, we might say to him, "Hey, we want these things that you offered." But I'm telling you, from having worked with this process now for a very long time, those things that you want to see there are not on the table.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you. Starting backward maybe, my understanding is that, it's more than an understanding, it's a recall, is that former Administrator Peterson's letter to the city was a summation of an interchange that included the city staff and the public that had been going on for quite a few months prior to the April 12, 2011 date of the letter. What was, through the good agency of Delegate Mizura and others, Secretary, I'm sorry, former Administrator Peterson came to this council chamber for a public hearing, so there was quite a bit of interchange to that point. It would rather amaze me that an administrator in charge of an agency that gives out, I don't know how many millions, hundreds of millions of dollars in contracts, would not understand the legal ramifications of a letter, a formal letter, that he sent that included members of the city council and of his own agency, as well as his boss, the former secretary of the Maryland Department of Transportation, Ms. Beverly Swain Staley. So I, I do have the impression, based on the recall of the sequence of events, that this letter did come after a significant interchange that involved the various parties here, and from a authority whom we must assume was fully competent and cognizant of the legal ramifications of a letter that he was sending, and would not be freelancing in any way. It's a rather curious situation if the current S H A management, and for that matter, the superiors to the S H A administrator within the state government, are repudiating commitments undertaken by the former administrator within the current administration of Governor O'Malley. It's not like this is stuff that came out under former Governor Ehrlich or anything like that. So we understand political reversals, and this is not an example of one. So I, I just have to, I just have to infer that former Administrator Peterson knew what he was talking about legally. I would, I cannot adequately evaluate the documents from 1934, given that I've just seen them in the last few minutes. I would venture that at least some of my council colleagues would have the same attitude toward those documents, and then the members of the public as well, who don't even have them before them. I would very much value just taking what we have before us and finding out what the reaction is from the S H A, from staff and the legal representation within the S H A. And to that end, I would propose that the council consider employing Ms. Rosenfeld as a special counsel to attend a meeting with S H A to present her arguments on behalf of the city of Tacoma Park rather than any other party. While there is a confluence of interests among the various parties present in this room, it's not a good idea for a, for an attorney to represent more than one party at a time when there is not 100% agreement, which there is here. And I would be very interested in seeing how far we can get with the arguments that she has made. I, I'm not clear, however, whether those arguments have any, I'm addressing a question to you here, whether those arguments have any real material impact on the final outcome here, that outcome being that the S H A steps up to its responsibilities that we all recognize to maintain the road. I am extremely concerned that my constituents in Ward One, they're the mayor's constituents, and frankly, each of us has, on the council, has responsibilities for everyone at Tacoma Park, that they have suffered poor road conditions on 410, in particular, from the fire station down to Park Avenue, a short distance from here, road conditions that lead vehicles to cross the center line to avoid potholes and ruts in the road, that have caused vibrations in the houses adjacent to the roadway, causing cracks in the walls, and this has been reported to me by several of my constituents. And it's a painful situation that we haven't been able to do anything about this. I would certainly hope that the S H A recognizes that it is the intention of the city of Tacoma Park to come to an agreement here, that we're talking about details, and would carry out those patch repairs according to an expedited schedule, noting that the discussion has been on the table for many months. The last I had heard, the S H A was prepared to send a contractor out approximately October 15. I would very much hope that they could live up to that schedule, noting that we are negotiating here, discussing here in good faith. So I, once again, as a step forward, I would propose that the council authorize the employment of Ms. Rosenfeld, if she wishes to undertake it, the assignment, to act as special counsel alongside Ms. Silber, the city attorney, in a subsequent discussion to be held soon with the State Highway Administration. Thank you.
Before I go to Councilmember Schultz, does the, you know, the city Before I go to Councilmember Schultz, does the, either the city attorney or the city manager have any thoughts about the ability of State Highway to do those repairs to that section that we're most concerned about, no matter the state of the negotiation on this MOU? Have there been commitments made by them?
The commitment was made, yes, to get the patching done.
So that it doesn't appear to be waiting on a final resolution or signatures on this?
That, I agree with the city manager. That's correct.
That's excellent.
Okay.
But I also wanted to say one other thing, Mayor, just very quickly. If the premise of Ms. Rosenfeld being a special counsel is that she would bring these documents to the attention of SHA, I just want this council to know that these documents were brought to us by SHA, that they used them for their argument, that in 1934, this plan had been accepted. And they literally, you know, on the conference table, pieced together plat after plat after plat, showing how the whole roadway was accounted for by that plan in 1934. So there were two state, SHA attorneys at that meeting, and both had obviously spent quite a bit of time on the research about that question. So I don't think there would be much new to share with them from at least the review of these documents.
Question of interpretation.
Right.
It is, it is a question always about interpretation, of course.
Councilmember Schultz.
Thank you, Mayor Williams. I wasn't going to speak on this subject at all, because I figured that I'd leave that to the council members whose wards that are directly affected by the, by the, by the subject, but I guess I'm puzzled by the fact that, on the one hand, it seems like we have been, the city, through our attorney, has been negotiating and having good-faith negotiations with SHA. This draft, we discussed in closed session and concurred, that we'd accomplished, we'd gone a lot from the point distinct from where we had begun negotiations sometime over a year ago on this thing. And we're much closer to what it was we want than we were then. I, I'm uncomfortable with the, I mean, there's a couple of things I want to say, and I haven't had a chance to formulate my thoughts on it very well, but I think that there's something to be gained by bringing this whole matter to final conclusion and getting agreement when two entities, one that's much bigger than the other one, and does have eminent domain rights over us, no matter what we may want to put in writing ultimately, to try to bring these things to conclusion in good faith, in the hope that that will set a precedent for cooperation going down the road in future years. Obviously, it's in our selfish interest to make this agreement as precise and as clear as possible, so that future administrators at SHA don't have any trees or shadows to hide behind. And in that sense, your comments are well taken and well made, that, you know, let's make it clear that what's ours, seems to be ours, and we're certain we're granting these easements so that you can do the work that you have to do, and we want you to do, and that you're going to pay for, and we want you to pay for. I, I mean, I think we can argue, I think Ms. Silber's right is that two attorneys in good faith can disagree on interpretation of documents that are over 70 years old. That's why they created judges and courts, to settle things like that. And I just don't see the point of spending a whole lot more time and money with regard to this matter. I'm not sure that I see that we're arguing or concerning ourselves over significant differences, and trying to get that last little inch of agreement from the SHA, it may not be worth it in the end. Control, I mean, I, beyond that, I can't say anything more, because I clearly have not paid as acute attention to this matter as some of my, you know, fellow council members on this, who have, you know, more need to worry about it than I have over the last year. But I, that's really all I want to say, and I would encourage us not to drag this thing out, and keep finding little ways in which we can grab just one more thing from the State Highway Administration.
Councilmember O'Malley, did you have something, or did you change your mind?
Yeah, just, I guess one comment is that I would be interested in, and I think Councilmember Grimes spoke to this, in seeing more of the record from the city council files from 1934. Just so I have the context of the discussion that was taking place, of what the council was reviewing with regard to the Maryland 410 project, as it was called.
I apologize, because I hadn't heard that the council would ask for these documents, but I can get them to you tomorrow. I have electronically now all of the plats, all the land documents, and the only records the city has at this time, according to the city clerk, is the two pages of the minutes and the letter, which you already now have seen, but I can also send that back out for everybody to have their own copy to review more closely, but it's a very short, very short record. The city doesn't have a larger file that we know of.
Thank you. And the one other comment I'd add is just that the feedback I've gotten from constituents has been positive, in that they, they view that the issues around permitting and sidewalks and maintenance, that they have been concerned about, have been addressed at this agreement. That's not to say that they're thinking about the legal complexities that we're now discussing. Anyway, thank you for that.
Just clarification from the city clerk. So what I'm hearing is that you've looked at the minute books from 1933 or '32, and there doesn't appear to be any other mention of this particular project.
No, I didn't say that.
I just sort of-
What I said was, there were no, there's no document affixed to those pages of minutes that show drawings that are referred to in the minutes. I haven't, I mean, I have not gone to look at the full, for instance, year before of minutes. I haven't done that. I didn't know it was needed, but we could certainly, could certainly do that.
Right.
Yeah.
It's easy enough to do.
Absolutely.
I've read many of those minute books.
Right, right.
Would you volunteer?
Potentially. Councilmember Stevens.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I, I think we've all shared the concern that, that we give up more than we have to and cause ourselves potential problems downstream from now. I appreciate all the work that's gone into this. I think it sounds like there's still some information that may be valuable, to see if it's there. I wouldn't want to set up the battle of the attorneys, but I would ask that maybe it, you know, we have someone else who certainly has been involved in this and learned a great deal about it, and I would just ask if maybe we couldn't work in cooperation with Ms. Silber to, you know, represent the best interests of the city and the city residents. So I would, I would support the suggestion that, that the attorney, I'm sorry, I forget your name in front of me.
Michelle Rosenfeld.
Michelle. You know, that we ask her to assist us with this matter.
I guess what I, what I see needing is some clarity, at least I'll say for me personally, to understand what it is in your interpretation of these documents that will gain us something that we aren't getting in the current agreement. Because I wouldn't want to say, you know, gee, come, send you in with staves and pitchforks, and kind of, what's the outcome? What are we expecting? What would it get for us that we don't have in this?
Certainly. And I don't think anybody has staves and pitchforks in mind. I think the goal across the board is to see that 410 is maintained and maintained consistently, and that State Highway take over the cost of doing that. The concerns that I have, and the reason why, in my view, the legal distinction between whether or not 410 remains part of the city municipal street structure, those components of it, or whether it's been incorporated by State Highway, to a large degree goes to what happens beyond the curb. And beyond the curb, if it's not part of the state highway system, lies with the city. And State Highway would need permission from the city to build new sidewalks, to do curb cuts, to put in new signage, to do tree maintenance. And State Highway would be empowered to do all of those things under the maintenance agreement, as it, as it wants to do. The distinction is, and as Neil Peterson recommended, that State Highway would do that work under a right-of-entry agreement, which means that the city would review the state highway's plans and approve them. And if State Highway is recommending something, for example, a new sidewalk, or some new signage, or a new signal, in a location where the city has concerns about that, then you wouldn't grant them a right-of-entry until the state highway administration and the city reached consensus on that. So I think that's a significant point. And under the curb-to-curb approach, there is a clear line. You would get a meets and bounds, and you would define what is within the state highway administration's jurisdiction and what remains within the city. Right now, it's all very amorphous. There is no clear line as to what is state highways and what is the cities. And so instead of bringing the clarity that I think you have the opportunity to bring at this point, you're, from my point of view, you're setting yourself up for confusion down the road. You know, 25, 30 years from now, a future set of city officials will be facing these very same issues. What does state highway administration have the authority to do along the roadbed? So I think it's important to bring more clarity than we have, and I think it's important for the city to retain autonomy where it can, which doesn't mean that State Highway cannot do the work or shouldn't do the work. It just means that you have more oversight over how those actions will affect the residents of the city. And just one more point with respect to this, Mr. Peterson's letter. It's not a contract. It hasn't been signed. It's not a, you know, a legally binding document in that sense, but this, this letter was printed on April 12 of 2011. That is not a very long time ago in the world of governments. And it was presented in good faith following discussions, and frankly, I don't see why State Highway wouldn't be just a little bit embarrassed to walk away from these commitments. They're not onerous. They're, they're implementation kinds of agreements. Where does the city have control? Where does State Highway have control? Where do we agree that we're going to notify the city about permits? He says State Highway, the city would be allowed to have inspectors inspect work conducted pursuant to permits. That's not in the current agreement. It says State Highway would need a right-of-entry agreement to do work beyond the curb line. That's not in the current agreement. There's all kinds of things that, that he committed to, that's, and not he, that State Highway committed to at that time. And frankly, it doesn't make sense to me that those aren't fully incorporated in the current document, so.
Okay. And so then I want to ask the city attorney if I'm-
Could I just interrupt for one second? And that list of things includes a prescriptive easement that the city gives to SHA?
It does include a prescriptive easement, correct.
So I wanted to find out, my sense was that the Neil Peterson letter was predicated on certain assumptions, like Councilmember O'Malley just said, and that kind of, it was essentially a negotiating package based on those assumptions, and if those assumptions have now changed because of SHA's interpretation of, I'll use the short, the phrase "ownership", even though we've had that discussion about ownership isn't the right word, that essentially that changed the conversation, and that therefore, from their point of view, they have kind of abandoned that piece because that pertained to an earlier thing that they're not talking about anymore.
Exactly. I'm sort of, I'm surprised that one would say, hey, hold them to it, when we've just spent many, many, many meetings and exchanges of ideas, and we have not been able to hold them to it. We certainly looked at the Peterson letter many times. We certainly started conversations there. I totally appreciate what Councilmember O'Malley said. This was, at the time, we were looking at a prescriptive easement, which I'm sure Attorney Rosenfeld agrees was a terrible formulation for us, because it gives up all power and ownership to State Highway in an adverse sort of way. And so we weren't interested in that structure at all. But we did try to get some of the benefits, and we worked on that, and what we came forward with tonight was what we thought a pretty good MOU. And I don't think it's realistic to just say, well, no, no, we want to have the Peterson language, because frankly, we're not going to get the Peterson language. And I'm not sure, you know, how to make that clear to our community, that we did try that, and that wasn't available. I'm not sure exactly what has been happening at State Highway, but of course, there's new leadership there. I don't know if they're making changes all around the state, or just they're concerned about Route 410 and Tacoma Park, but I know what they're, what they're doing is looking at everything they agree to with us as the potential precedent issue of what it's going to do in other parts of the state to municipal ownership of state highway roads, or operation of state highway roads. And, you know, they're very much aware of that. I think within their, their side of the table, they did make a lot of changes. It's obvious, they left, they left the Peterson approach. They also left some of the other legal theories and legal structures that they started with. And where they ended up is what we have here in this MOU.
And the city manager?
Yeah, I guess I just want to- Sue, wasn't one of the things that happened too, is that coming into the picture were some new attorneys, at least a new attorney with SHA that found some other documents about kind of how they create state roads? Wasn't there some language change?
Well, yes and no. The particular attorney that we were dealing with did change, but it wasn't her and him that made that finding. That was with the more senior legal staff at SHA.
But could you describe what that was? Because I don't think that's explained here.
Well, in addition to all of the land documents that we have in front of us from 1934, there was also a major sessions law that was passed by the state legislature, I forget if it was '34 or '32, but early '30s, which totally sort of revamped the power of the state roads commission, which is the predecessor of State Highway. And, you know, I think it's within that language that one can see this concept that I've been operating under, which is that State Highway can assume authority and control for roads that are being used for state purposes, and there isn't necessarily the requirement of formal conveyance like you would have between a private party and the state, as long as it was already a public right-of-way.
And if I could point out, as one who's sitting on this side of the audience, this is a major ground shift in the approach to how this agreement is being considered and presented. The approach had been that there would be a perpetual maintenance agreement and a maintenance agreement under the assumption that these remained under municipal control. And we don't have the documents. We've gotten some of them, thanks to Susan, but only very, very recently, some of them just in the last few hours. The reference to the prior state code, there's no discussion of that in the staff report. There's no legal analysis that we've been provided, and so it's, we're really playing catch-up in the sense that from, from what I've been able to glean from the documents, I do think that there's been a significant change in approach, but it's very hard to tell what basis there has been for this change in approach. And, and again, regardless of the fact that there may or may not be a prescriptive easement or a maintenance easement, in the spirit of the collaborative working relationship that State Highway has, has put forward, that it would like to have with the city- that State Highway has put forward, that it would like to have with the city, I don't think that the other operational terms put forward by Neil Peterson are onerous in any sense. And I don't see why they can't be incorporated in whatever form of legal agreement you reach moving forward. And maybe it requires a discussion at a different level.
Councilmember Schultz.
Two comments. In Mr. Peterson's April 12th through 2011 letter, he talks about, he calls this a proposal on page one. And then on the second page, he talks about using a prescriptive easement, which Ms. Silver said is something that's been set aside, is intolerable. So I don't really see how we can go back and use this letter saying, we want to go back to this letter and use this because this is the point of departure, when we've already picked it apart and said, there's a major component in this letter that we don't like. Sort of like trying to have our cake and eat it too. But I wanted to respond to something, react to something you said earlier, and this is with a question, and that is, is that, I mean, it doesn't have to be in the self-interest of all the stakeholders, the state, historic Tacoma, and the city, that the boundary lines, what you were describing as, for example, the roadway width from curb to curb, then we all have a self-interest in having that be very explicit. Nobody gains on this thing by it being mushy. And I'm wondering, you know, maybe the debate is whether it ends here or whether it's a little bit further over there, but whatever it is, you have to have some way of defining the boundaries of what's being affected by whatever's on a piece of paper. And if that's not in there, isn't it in our self-interest to try to get everybody on the same page with that? With that, whether, you know, the boundary of what we're coming?
Just to comment, though, you know, the right-of-way line, the right-of-way goes to the property edges on either side. So either one, either whether it's a curb, you can see it, and the property line, you do it by survey, but either one can be measured and identified.
But realizing, for example, going back to these 1934 documents, I'm sure it was crystal clear to the folks voting on that, on those minutes, what they intended. But to have something that memorializes what those boundaries are and what the parties understand them to be today will be very helpful 30, 40, 50 years down the road.
Yeah, one thing. I mean, curbs tend to move.
But to my mind, curbs aren't the operative important detail. It's the ownership, what was given as a public right-of-way, which goes, one would assume, beyond the curbs. In some cases, like on Flower Avenue, we found that it didn't. But is, would you agree that the right-of-way is the operative important boundary? Or is what you're saying based on your sense that the important piece is the curb?
I think the right-of-way is what's important. And sometimes that does go from curb to curb, and sometimes it extends beyond. And so, that's why it's important to delineate where that boundary is. I think the assumption has been curb-to-curb is generally where it rests. But from day one, I've been recommending that there be a meets-and-bound survey of exactly where that right-of-way line falls, so that we do know exactly what we're talking about.
Right. Because I know on Eastern Avenue, the District Maryland border is actually, in some cases, 50 feet inside people's front yards. And they may or may not be aware of that, but it means that the district government owns almost up to their doors in some cases.
I'm getting a little confused now. I assume that we were thinking full right-of-way for this agreement, and your point is that there should be a meets-and-bound survey to get the exact location for that. But I thought your previous testimony was that you were recommending that the only thing State Highway should control is curb-to-curb. Isn't that what you said?
I did say that, because I think, from my mind, the assumption based on, part on Neil Peterson's letter, was that the right-of-way really did extend curb-to-curb because it's such a constrained area. Now, my understanding of the current draft is that State Highway is asserting that it has the right to go beyond the curb to do additional work. And it's unclear to me whether or not that means within the right-of-way or something beyond that. And it's that uncertainty, it's that lack of clarity, that leads to confusion over what it is exactly that we're talking about in terms of the width.
So you agree that one way of doing this would be to say the full right-of-way, not just curb-to-curb, but it needs to be actually surveyed?
That's correct. Whatever that delineation is, needs to be clear.
Yeah. If you notice in some of the documents, there is a measurement given. It says 50 feet in some places, but it's not consistent. It's not at all something one could count on. But sometimes in those documents, it shows what that width is. Thank you.
Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And I thank everybody for all the effort put into this conversation. I think what I've heard tonight is that there is still some, it's not, things aren't clear yet. And I think there are at least some people who are uncomfortable, some councilmembers who are uncomfortable with deciding this at this point. And I think there would be value in having, you know, the attorneys get together and talk. And I realize that sometimes that can be difficult when there's competing opinions. But I think it would be helpful to me and possibly to the council to have the two attorneys sit down and work through this, try to gather some more information, if it is available, and then come back and at least be a little clearer on where the differences are so the council can make a decision. And hopefully, there won't be such a gap in opinions. So anyways, I would like to see that be the direction from the council tonight.
Councilmember Grimes.
Thank you, Councilmember Siemens, for stating the second half of what I was going to say, although I did suggest earlier...
You should have told me the first half, too.
You'll hear the first half in a second. First half becomes the second half. Although I did state earlier that it would be very helpful, I believe, for the city of Tacoma Park to have Ms. Rosenfeld additionally involved in discussions with the State Highway Administration and not only with the city attorney. The first half of what I was going to say is going to, what I will say now, is to address one point that came up a bit earlier in the conversation regarding a prescriptive easement as a premise for former Administrator Neil Peterson's letter. For those who do not have a copy of the letter in front of them, I'll describe that the letter has two expository paragraphs that position the whole thing, and that the words "prescriptive easement" don't appear in those expository paragraphs. Then there's a very short third line and a half that I quoted earlier. "In the interest of resolving the ownership and maintenance issues for MD 410 within the city, S.H.A. proposes," someone pointed out that word "proposes," "the following resolution." Earlier on, I quoted the first of those items, the first of those eight items. "The city would retain any rights-of-way it owns outside the curb lane, et cetera." The second of those eight items is that S.H.A. would claim a prescriptive easement. That is, the prescriptive easement in here is in a point that is subsidiary, that is subordinate to the expository material that introduces this letter, and it is in parallel at the same level in this letter with seven other points. So in other words, my interpretation of Neil Peterson's letter is that the prescriptive easement is not a premise of this letter. Rather, it is a conclusion of the letter with no greater weight and standing than the other seven points of commitment that he makes in here. So that is a point that I wanted to address in response to earlier discussion here. And then, once again, thank you, Councilmember Siemens, for your noting the uncertainty and lack of clarity that Ms. Rosenfeld used those two terms earlier that exists here that suggests that we would be well-advised to investigate further. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail.
This gets more and more complicated.
Yes.
If I had put out an offer for someone to buy their house for $400,000 in exchange for the property at X location, and they said, they came back to me and said, well, I don't want to give you my house, but how about if you just give me $400,000? I would say no, even though I had put it in writing that, you know, that I was going to offer them $400,000 before. That's what I see this letter as saying. The city is offering one thing in the letter, which is, the city is giving up a prescriptive easement in exchange, S.H.A. is giving six or seven other things. That's a more minor point. With regard to Ms. Rosenfeld working on behalf of the city, I guess my concern about that is that up until this point, she's represented a different client. Her file on this issue has been developed for another client who has a different agenda than the city. And I don't know exactly what that agenda is, but I'm assuming it's more to the purpose of historic Tacoma. Whereas our agenda is historic considerations, is permitting considerations, is aesthetic considerations, are the considerations of all of our residents, which go far beyond that. And so I'm concerned about the conflict inherent in that sort of transition. And the conflict inherent in us having worked with one attorney through the process that predates my experience on council, and just how complicated that therefore becomes. And so any discussion, I think, of involving both attorneys, we would have to first resolve this difference of purpose between the point that brought them to both of these places. The other question, the question I have for both attorneys or anyone else in the room, if, and this has gotten so complicated that I may have now lost my point, but let me try to put it out there. Would, in your view, would S.H.A. agree to some sort of provision in this document that said, whereas the city of Tacoma Park and S.H.A. both agree that this document creates no more rights for S.H.A. to the area outside of the existing roadbed, outside the curb-to-curb area? Would they agree to some sort of provision like that? Or, for example, in provision 2B, where it says, "S.H.A. will determine maintenance, routine maintenance, grass mowing, da-da-da-da-da." But no other, but, you know, some sort of qualifying sentence in there where it said, "But no other," that this agreement creates no other right of S.H.A. to work outside of the existing roadbed. Do we think that S.H.A. might accept something like that or might not accept something like that? Because it seems to me that some sort of limit like that would at least clarify that this agreement doesn't change whatever dynamic existed before it was put out with regard to the area that is within the right-of-way but outside the road, existing roadbed.
I've been having similar thoughts about what other language like that might be helpful. For example, to have State Highway acknowledge that they don't have formal conveyances of major segments of the roadway, you know, something like that very explicitly in here. So it's possible that we could get some language like that. I think there is quite a bit of that already in other places, as you've probably noticed. And I think, I think I've been taking notes of some of these ideas. So I by no means want to say that Ms. Rosenfeld's thoughts on this have not been helpful to me. I've been struggling with some of the things she's said. But believe me, we have spent a great deal of time of research and thought about sort of how this all works. And I don't think anything is brand-new that we're hearing tonight.
Councilmember Schultz, and then I'll go to the city manager for some comments.
Just real quick, I think it's best that the city be represented by an attorney rather than more than one, and just encourage the two of them to continue to do their consulting with each other. Apparently, you already have, you're both benefiting from each other's ideas, and that's basically all we really want. That's all I wanted to say.
Ms. Rosenfeld.
Yes, I think, you know, one issue, I think, is a policy question for the council, and that does have to do with what happens outside of the roadway. Most of 410, the right-of-way goes beyond the curbs, and it goes across, and so the sidewalks and sometimes tree lawns are within the right-of-way. The normal language that S.H.A. uses, which is referenced in here about mowing the grass and that kind of thing, really does not come into play on 410 in terms of mowing the grass because the adjacent property owners are expected to mow the grass on the tree lawn between their sidewalk and the curb. It's normally the language that's used, say, on New Hampshire Avenue, where there's the median that has grass that they're supposed to take care of. The issue, though, for the council is what to do with trees. And you can make a decision that you want S.H.A. to deal with them and pay for them as they're traditionally supposed to do, or you can make a decision, as Councilmember Grimes mentioned, that the city take that role on. And I think that ends up coming into some of this discussion about what happens between the curb and the right-of-way line on the other side of the sidewalk. So that's one thing that there would need to be direction on by the council. Do you want to take care of the trees or not? And I think that does, it ends up coming into, you know, fairly significant play if the issue is what happens outside the curb line.
And is anybody, either the city or S.H.A., likely to want to say, well, if we're going to, if we were going to, say, the city is going to maintain the trees within the right-of-way on that particular state highway, should the city be maintaining the trees in all of the state highway rights-of-way in the city? What makes 410 more important than some other state highways within the city, whether they're in historic districts or not?
Right. Right now, State Highway does maintain the trees along the other state highways. We had quite a dramatic tree fall across Philadelphia Avenue very recently. And, you know, it would be very costly if we were the ones that had to contract to remove the tree when that happens.
On the order of how many thousand dollars? Any idea?
No.
$7,000? Five to seven?
Quite a lot. But I think that the major issue is just the normal annual maintenance of trees as we do elsewhere in city parks and that kind of thing. And it's a decision that the council needs to make about how you want to handle that.
And I'll just weigh in that I think the most prudent way to go forward in terms of any direction that the city council might give about the various attorneys and how they might work together and who might represent the city is that the city attorney has been involved in this process in dealing with S.H.A., and I think that's the way to continue. I think it would send a very strange message to S.H.A. if all of a sudden the city attorney were joined by another attorney who was arguing something different. I think the differences have to be worked out in discussions between the city attorney and Ms. Rosenfeld as far as what's the best way to go forward with this. Because if we sent somebody else in with a different, and it's basically two attorneys representing the city arguing different points where they disagree, S.H.A. is going to go, wait a minute, you all worked this out. What are you doing here, talking about all this stuff? Just come to us with your position. We'll agree, we'll disagree, we'll negotiate. But I think that's the only real way that we can go forward. Councilmember Mail.
And just one follow-up to the city manager. You mentioned trees are the issue, but not stormwater infrastructure, or?
My understanding is that State Highway wants to maintain and continue to maintain the stormwater system, and our Public Works Department is happy that that's what they do.
Okay.
So we've had some various proposals, and I know that the city attorney and the city manager would like to have as clear direction as possible from the council as far as next steps. I will attempt... Yes?
May I say one more?
Sure.
Okay. I'm Lorraine Pierceall. I'm president of Historic Tacoma, and I heard a lot of surprising things tonight. Why wouldn't you go with the most protective argument, Sue, that you could possibly craft? Why wouldn't you just do that? Because our community will always have to worry about the widening of 410. That's where this argument started. There were 150 people in this room, and, Tim, that was before you were on here, and I guess you missed that meeting. But there were people in here that were absolutely furious and in here today. And yet we find ourselves in a work session. Look how... furious and, and in here today. And yet we find ourselves in a work session. Look how incredibly important this issue is. You ask what Historic Tacoma's agenda is. Let me tell you what our agenda is: to protect this community. And I will tell you, we will do whatever we have to do to protect this community. The threat of widening is a serious one, and other people will face this if we do not in our, in our lives. This is a legacy issue. I assure you, this is not, Fred, a little thing. I am shocked at what I heard coming out of all of you. We spent this summer on our expense strengthening that document on behalf of the city to give the protections to our community, plus all the permitting and the crosswalk and all of this. And yet, we turn around, you did not even, Bruce, have the courtesy to tell us this was going on, and you wrote an entirely different 180-degree document that does not agree with the facts and does not agree what Michelle laid out to you agrees with what we're seeing in the Platts. A credible legal argument can be mounted that will protect this community. This does not, would you want to do. What, what are you going to say to S H A when they, when they basically say, "Oh, well, we've been doing this, maintenance outside the lines all the time, and we, it's a prescriptive easement as far as we're concerned"? Your honor, what do you think? And what do you think that, your honor, will say? Your obligation is to protect this community. That is your obligation. I have heard nickels and dimes and all of that, but your obligation is to protect this community from this major, major threat that has been through our history. And if you don't know where we've been, you are not going to know where we're going. And I urge you all to educate yourselves on how fundamental the widening 410 has been in our history. It has, it permeates it, even for the purple line. This is not a joke. This is a serious thing. How can you possibly, how can you possibly consider a weaker argument when a stronger one will do? That, it makes no sense to me. You have a responsibility. Those people, those 150 people who came out when you were going to do a land swap will tell you you have a responsibility. And we will remind you, that's our agenda, Tim. That's our agenda. We want to protect this community from road widening. And I assure you, we are going to do it in some way. Don't shame us with this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. We, our aim is to protect this community as well. And just to respond to one point in particular, the negotiations that were going on with staff and the city attorney were continuing negotiations. The result of those negotiations were made available to the council very recently. So it's not that I was hiding anything by saying, not saying something was going on when I knew it was going on. I did not know it was going on.
Negotiation is just that, Bruce.
Yes.
Negotiation is definitely, you work on.
I agree. All I'm saying is, it seemed to me you were saying that I was hiding the fact that there were some changed negotiations. The negotiations were ongoing. We got the result of the changed negotiations very recently.
That document sprang from the head of Zeus really fast, is all I'm saying.
Okay.
Just, we're continuing to try and get the best result from this ongoing two-year negotiation. That's why it is coming back in work sessions so that we can talk about it. And that's why we're taking under advisement the information that you've provided. You've gotten some information fairly late. We have, we want to get and see some more information. We're going to continue to talk about this. And what we need to do is decide the best way to go forward.
Slow down.
It's been slowed down. It's been going slow for two years.
You sound exhausted. I don't blame you for feeling exhausted and frustrated, but-
Slow down, because the community is not, I, I was sitting watching TV. I didn't realize. The last thing I knew, there were a lot of people who showed up here who really, um, let you all know what it, of course-
We need to have you speak at the mic.
Okay. I'm one of the people who lives on 410 or sides it. And it would be my house that I could lose based on what you all are recommending in terms of giving authority over to the state. So let's just call, no one's been talking about it until Lorraine got up here, about what the real underlying threat is: the enlargement of 410, the taking away of homes. My understanding, as was reported back to me by my husband, that a huge number of people came out here to, to explain and clarify why this was such a loaded issue, and why you should not, and the history behind it, and why you should not give up our autonomy to the state without, by God, without a fight. And when I heard, um, this attorney, I mean, my, I guess, I'll finish with this. My understanding is that you all, in conjunction with the community, decide what do you want to have happen? What's the goal? What's the outcome that you want? What I'm hearing is that the outcome that you want is not what the community wants.
And can you give us your name, please?
Judy Hagopian.
Thank you. Um, would either the city manager or the, or the city, just a minute, just a minute, would either the city manager or the city attorney care to explain anything about, uh, potential widening of a road by state highway?
I think there's two points, and I won't speak to the legal one, but the, the master plan one is that the master plan, um, limits Route 410 between New Hampshire and the city line on the west-
Chicago.
-for many more than two lanes. And to change that requires significant change through the planning board and the county council, and, as well as having all kinds of legislative items. The, uh, the other kind of practical fact is that any widening past the right-of-way required, would require fairly expensive condemnation process that the state's not likely to pursue. And finally, because a good portion of the, um, roadway goes through the historic district, that triggers other state and federal laws that make widening extremely difficult. And it's unlikely that the state would widen in one section only to have it narrowed again in another. It doesn't, it doesn't allow any throughput of cars. Um, we did, and I think, Sue, you can address to the, to the point about not giving up any provisions within this MOU that address, that would give us less standing in a road widening case. And I, Sue, I'm going to defer to you on the legal language.
Thank you, city manager. I, I think that you really spelled it out well. Obviously, there has to be condemnation or eminent domain to widen on private property. We certainly started our negotiation with the idea that we wanted them to entirely concede that there would never be any widening. We talked about covenants that would go with the land records to that effect, and they were absolutely unwilling to do that. Um, what we did get, which I, I'm sure is not perfect, but is language in the whereas clauses, which are then made part of the contract, incorporated into the contract, that nothing in this MOU can be used as any kind of consent to widening, or in any way to, to dilute our standing in any condemnation, eminent domain, widening kind of, um, controversy in the future. So there shouldn't be, so, so basically, this agreement on its face can certainly not be used against us.
And I'll just add that my sense about, uh, potential widening is that there are many impediments to that, and one of the best impediments to that is the historic district. And that, in the end, there is no guarantee that the city can make, independent of any other entity, that there will never be road widening. We, we do everything we can to try and limit it, and I think there are a lot of practical limitations in terms of, uh, what it would mean and what it would take for the state to do it. But if, in the end, at some point in the future, who knows when, the state did decide that they wanted to widen it, they could do it, and, or they could attempt to do it. And there would be the need to bring all of the legal arguments and all of the, I'll say, social or cultural arguments about not doing it. Um, the, when the representatives were here, Neil Peterson was here, what I recall him saying was that they couldn't say that they would never do it, but that they were certainly, that they didn't foresee doing it because it just wasn't, it wasn't part of their plans. If, they have no money to do a lot of things they want to do, let alone take on a political battle and spend money for something that is just not in their plans. So, uh, I think this is an attempt to do, to get as much clarity as possible about who does what maintenance and who has what responsibilities and who has the, uh, how the city has the right to be a part of as much as possible, any of the work that does go on along there, whether it's, uh, utility cuts or utility work, that there be consultation, that there be as much as we can have in terms of, uh, utility permits and, and the city involvement in all of that every step of the way. And I think this, this, what has been brought to us goes a long way toward many of the things that we wanted to do to get there. Uh, councilmember Simmons.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I appreciate what you said, mayor, but the, the problem is that the state doesn't have the money now, and we all hope the economy gets better. We do have the, the money in the future to, to do projects. And the fact that the people that we're working with right now are very nice and understanding, they may not be the people who move in there-
I agree.
-you know, several years downstream. The question I have, though, is, uh, which portion, I mean, I think, I look at 410, and outside the city on one end, it's four lanes wide, and outside the city on the other end, it's four lanes wide. So the idea that they would, uh, not widen just a portion of it seems kind of, uh, false because they've already done that. You know, they've left it at two-lane street Tacoma Park because they couldn't. Uh, but I'm curious, um, how much of, you know, the historic, uh, district would protect maybe, uh, we offer some protection for, uh, at least making it more difficult to widen?
I think, uh-
What portion of, of, you know, 410 through the city is within the historic district?
Uh, I want to respond to that a few ways, because I think it's, it's really with, when you're dealing with a behemoth like the state, it's every brick in the wall that's important to have. Yes, he testified, and I have it, that his biggest impediment was our historic district. However, if the state wants it, and someday they will, it really is important that we are armed, and we are armed with protections up to the teeth, and that we not just have one, but we have many. It's very foolish to sit there and think that that threat will not present itself to us again. It certainly will. History has taught us that. And, okay, so the historic district, um, given what I have just said, when they want it, they will want it. The historic district runs down, um, from Chicago Avenue-
On one side of the street.
On one side of the street. I know, it's a very, down Tacoma, it stops-
Two sides of the street.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Seth. You probably, are you looking at a map?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. You can do that.
Which section, which section is dotted on both sides of the street?
It's one side of the street from opposite Tacoma, I'm sorry, Silver Spring International Park. Uh, in other words, not all the way to Chicago Avenue. It is one side of the street until Tacoma Avenue. From Tacoma Avenue, it is both sides of the street approximately 60% of the way to the intersection with Piney Branch Road. From the intersection, from that 60, from that 40% through, um, through Cedar Avenue, it is not historic district. From Cedar Avenue-
It's hard-
It's historic district on one side again.
It's choppy.
It's choppy, yeah. Uh, so, so it's not complete historic district. I, I will note that it's not only, you'll correct me here-
And it goes through the junction. It does go through the junction.
But it is, but it is a federal register as well.
Yes. Yes, and local, and local district, yeah.
Sorry, the extent of the two areas, they're not, uh, co-extant, what's the word?
Right.
They're not exactly the same.
The, uh, in the district, it's, it's national register eligible. In, um, some of these areas, it's both, uh, national register listed and a local district. So we have a very complex situation. And why do you think that is, Fred? It's because people wanted to be armed to the teeth with protections, because they understood the history of 410. And a lot of these-
My, my, my point, I appreciate the, the answer to that. And my point is that, uh, that maybe the, we don't have the full protection that we could have. Um, and again, I go back and with, you know, full due respect to Ms. Silver, that I think, uh, you know, having uh, the most brain power on this as possible is valuable. And so I would like to see, and, even if we have, uh, you know, the Historic Tacoma attorney working with the city attorney, that at least we, uh, we ask for that to be accomplished.
Well, I would think we have similar goals to protect this community. At least, I certainly hope we do. Thanks.
And what I was proposing was that they do work together.
We also-
I don't think there's any question there. Councilmember Daniels.
That's why you're the mayor.
It's why they pay you the big bucks. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Williams. Uh, when I read the work session, uh, information, the one, you know, I put, put a lot of notes on here, but the one place I put the big asterisk before was the widening of the street. And I, I'm going to speak to the behemoth called State Highway Administration. I don't care what they're telling us about how little money they have. I'm going to say that's garbage. They have as much money as they want to have, when they want to have it, to buy whatever they need to buy, period in this sentence in the report. And, and I don't know how difficult it is, and, and with due respect to Ms. Silver, who's worked, worked very difficult, uh, long and hard on this, I don't know how difficult, how hard it is to go back in and correct the widening section of the, uh, of the, the actual MOU. And, and it may in fact be close to impossible, because this is not a, a question that we all have, have let go by the wayside through any of our discussions in closed session. It's always been, and it was, I was here the night of the 150 people, and it produced Neil Peterson's letter, uh, almost, not quite a year, but six months later, and then he was gone. Uh, I also, and in my lack of trust of State Highway, he knew darn good and well that he was going to be gone, and he wrote this, and so what? It's, it's paper. Um, so I, I just, is it impossible, it's, are there any possibilities to go back in and negotiate with, with the state about this one issue, about the, about the right-of-way?
Direct?
I, to, to Ms. Silver, I am.
No, direct.
That's the point.
We're saying that to do it.
That's the point we were getting to.
Yeah, let's just go for it. I mean, let's go back in and do it. I told, I, there's all these words tonight-
Miss Daniels Cohen, what we've been talking about is-
Yes, I'll be quiet.
What we, what we want the city attorney and the city manager to do as next steps.
Okay. So how do we make that happen, then?
I had a sense of that before. I've lost it.
Tonight.
I think, I think that there's a couple things. There's some pieces of information that, um, I think we need to assemble and have time for people to look at and to share. I certainly have heard the, um, the point of view and questions, um, that Michelle Rosenfeld has raised, and it's something that we certainly can share with, um, the folks from S H A. Um, however, I think that the, you know, the issue about road widening is probably not going to go anywhere else. It has always been the primary discussion point in the negotiations. It's, it's always, I think, been, I mean, it was the whole point of going into this in the first place. So I, you know, I feel like that's one area where, uh, we have, have pushed to the limits. The questions, I think, related to what happens along the sides of the road, I think is something that, that we can look at again. But I don't think it's going to make any difference on the subject of road widening. But I don't think it's going to make any difference on the subject of road widening in the, in the final-
Because no matter, no matter what we say, they are not ever going to agree to put in writing a document that says we are never going to widen 410.
That's right, they want it, yeah.
Even though we may want that, they will not put it in there.
But, but then that indicates to me there's a little bit of a red flag flapping around. They want to be able to widen the road. I'm sorry, I mean, I just-
Okay, so, so if we agree, what can we do to stop it?
Write a good document.
Okay.
Write an agreement.
Okay.
Strong and well thought through. And our previous agreement was a darn sight better than this one.
And I tell you what, we can work with you and continue to do that, but why you walked away from that and adopted this new version, I, I just, it's inexplicable.
Nothing has been adopted, and the reason things change is because S H A came with new documentation and said this changes the conversation.
You know, in, in my other life, when I worked in the private sector, I was hired to negotiate. You, 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 it is an active thing. It doesn't matter what somebody tells you they want. You tell them what you want and you, and you work at it and you hold the line. You don't just walk away and say, "They won't do it." Tough. You, they will do it. You need help with negotiating on this. It is a tough skill and you need to find a way to do that because our community is depending upon that. That is the critical thing here. It, it is a different skill set. You really, really need to negotiate. That is what we are talking about. You know, there, there are ways to do that, Bruce, really. We have a very good legal argument. We think we can mount one. You know, that's kind of where you start.
Councilmember Schultz.
It's, it's my understanding that we're the ones that want this agreement. We're the ones that invited Neil Peterson to come here because we were concerned, Colleen Clay, the representative, as councilmember for Ward 2, was particularly anxious about the terrible condition and all these other issues. Tacoma Junction, a couple of years ago, rose to the point where we needed to get some assurance that we could get control over this, over this road. Wasn't the state that came here. And, you know, the state doesn't have to agree to this agreement. They've got the authority to, I mean, in other words, we're, no agreement is not an option, okay? So we need to get an agreement here between the state, between two parties that so far, I believe, have done a pretty good job of negotiating in good faith. They understand exactly where we're coming from, that we're trying to be totally protective of our, there are, our private property in here, historic district or nonhistoric district. And that has never been out of the minds of any of us who've been in this negotiation. That's always been in the back of our minds, and I don't appreciate anybody suggesting to the contrary because if, to the extent there's any doubt about that, I just want to make sure people understand that we're conscious of that. I mean, my goodness, this whole, so much of the glory of what we believe in Tacoma Park was based on, on the historic ability of our, this city and others being able to stop an interstate from coming through the, the middle of our state, or middle of our city. And if, if the federal government, in all of its infinite stupidity, decided somewhere down 10, 20 years from now that I-95 should come through the middle of this, of this city, well, why don't we worry about that? Why don't we get an agreement with Congress that you can't do that? My point being is that a piece of paper is only a piece of paper. And we're trying to do the best we can on this thing and making the strongest case we can, realizing that we are a municipality dealing with a state. And there's, we can negotiate all we want. And the other point I would say is that I've been terribly impressed by the quality of your representation. And I think Ms. Rosenfeld has done an excellent job in everything I've read that she's, she's written with regard to this, to this matter and with other matters. I think you've got excellent representation, and I think the two attorneys have gone a long way in helping us figure out what's the optimal solution that we can come up with, given these very realistic constraints. So I appreciate the cooperation that we've gotten, and we're going to continue to go down that path.
But you're not going to stop an interstate with the agreement that I'm looking at now. You're just not. And Fred, you know, the reality is, the state wants an agreement too. They don't, they have to move cars through here. This is, you know, a major road. They got to worry about that, too. Okay? So it's in everybody's interest to find a really good solution. No, they will never say they won't widen the road. We know that. We know that. That's why we're telling you that you need to keep local control. That's a key. That's incredibly important. And it's not just a piece of paper. It's something you fight with in court.
Thank you. Councilmember Mail, and then I want to recognize Mr. Barron, he's wanted to say something.
And mine was just a point of order. I would just suggest that if we're going to have public comment, we sort of reopen it, and so that if there's anyone out there that wants to speak, we, we fully engage that comment and then go back to a council comment, public comment if we need to.
All right. Okay. Mr. Barron.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you briefly on this point. I come here as a citizen, as a constituent, as somebody who lives. My name's Frederick Barron, I live at 424 Ethan Allen Avenue, which is signed as Maryland 410. I'm very disappointed that the council seems to have forgotten the views of its citizens as expressed very vocally by a large number of citizens. I'm, perhaps my council member, in whom I'm probably most disappointed, wasn't on the council at the time, so perhaps he doesn't recall that event, perhaps he wasn't, wasn't in the city at the time. But I don't see that this agreement advances our cause in any way. It does not address my property rights, my personal property rights, which extend all the way to the curb. It doesn't set any standard for road maintenance. If you read the key paragraph, it says the S H A will determine in its sole and absolute discretion the maintenance schedule and implementation. Well, we've seen the condition of the road when it was left to the sole and absolute discretion of the state, and the city has had to address that by doing emergency repairs on a state highway. So I'm not sure that, I don't see what it is that we're gaining by doing this agreement. The city attorney either has been acting on instructions from the council, or, as the mayor has just suggested, the council was not aware of the city attorney having taken a completely different approach to the issue. I'm not sure which is worse, but I would respectfully, respectfully make two recommendations to the council. The first is that we hold another public hearing so that the council can be reminded of what the interests of its citizens are, and so that the citizens can hold the council accountable for the positions that council members are taking. And second, since we have a very adequate, very capable attorney in Ms. Rosenfeld, who has clearly advancing the interests of the citizens of Tacoma Park, and a city attorney who may not be so effectively advancing those interests, I would respectfully, respectfully propose that the city council retain Ms. Rosenfeld as a special attorney on this, not to compete with, but to replace the city attorney on this issue. Thank you very much for the opportunity to address the council.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Robert Lance, I live at 7215 Cedar Avenue. I'd like to thank Councilmember Mail for inviting other people to speak at this, at this event. I had a question for the council members, possibly to be brought up in a public hearing, if there is going to be a public hearing on this issue. What are the consequences of there not being an agreement? What if the city decided that there was not going to be an agreement? What would the cost of the city be? What would the responsibilities of the city be? And what would the other consequences be if there was no more negotiations and the city decided to do what the city needs to do with respect to 410? I'd like to have the city work up an actual cost estimate. Not only a tree falls over 410 and it costs $7,000 to take the tree away and the city has to pay for that. What exactly would the city have to pay for if the city decided to maintain 410 itself as it maintains other roads in the city, and what the consequences would be for the city budget if that was the decision? I think people need to know that number as to what it would cost if we made the road the way we wanted it. Thank you.
Ms. Rathwaite, do you want to just say a couple of words about the, some of the difficulties that you've faced in dealing with?
Sure.
410 and why the city has been trying to come up with an agreement?
Well, I share everyone's shock at the different direction that the negotiations have taken and that the document has taken. The city experienced that same shock ourselves directly from State Highway. The change in direction has come from State Highway, not from the city. As an observer in this process and, you know, providing comments, you know, when invited with meetings to the State Highway and to the council, the thinking in State Highway has done a 180. From three years ago, when they started referring people to the city for road maintenance, that was a big surprise. There was a shift in policy from State Highway at that point, and they abdicated their responsibility for certain sections, claiming that they were owned by the city, not State Highway. As we started negotiating on that point and, you know, really putting pen to paper different attorneys within State Highway, as it moved its way through the organization, realized and came to the conclusion that that was wrong-headed, inaccurate, and incorrect. And they now have to change the information that they have even still on their website that indicates certain sections of 410 are owned by the city. According to State Highway's attorneys, 410 in its entirety is owned by the state, regardless of individual public right-of-way that existed prior to that. There's laws and processes, and again, I'm not an attorney, but I can only tell you what I've heard and what I observed in the State Highway meetings. They have changed their legal view. It's almost as if we sort of woke up one morning and all that that happened three years ago didn't happen, and now we were back to where we were three years ago with the state saying, "It's ours, we maintain it, we own it, we take care of it." I do not think the state would allow the city to claim ownership or maintenance of 410 as it, as we, as we are today. They would say it's their road, they maintain the standards, and because they act on behalf of the state and the federal traffic control standards, they wouldn't trust the city to maintain the road to the state's standards. I know that does seem like a double standard. I drive over sections of 410 all the time, and I, I agree and share that opinion that the roadway condition is deteriorated to a severe and unacceptable condition. Part of that has been the, the legal mumbo jumbo that they threw us into three years ago when they abdicated their responsibility. That's a long way in going around to say, we, we certainly share the confusion that this must be for some folks in the public, but the direction that we're taking now is a direct result of State Highway's own internal decisions.
Okay, so my question is, and if we started out saying, "Hey, you guys own this piece of road, you've got to maintain it," and they said, "No, we don't," and now it's gotten to the point where they say, "Oh, yeah, we do,"
Right.
Then what do we need an agreement for?
Well, do you think so?
I'm in complete agreement with you. I have looked at state law, I'm not first in case law, but I've looked at state code, and I've seen nothing in there that says that any form of agreement is necessary for the State Highway to live up to its agreement, I mean, to its responsibility under state law to maintain state highways. I've looked at that, and I first saw that probably two years ago, as did others among you, but it seemed like we were on the road that the parties thought an agreement was needed.
Well, at that time, there was a disagreement about who owned it, but now if it's been resolved-
What I'm saying is that, you know, as the city attorney observed much earlier in this meeting, there's a difference between ownership of a State Highway and ownership of the land. And the ownership of the State Highway is sufficient, in my reading, as a non-attorney of state code, for the City, State Highway Administration to have responsibility for maintenance.
Can I speak to that question specifically? What we get in this agreement now, provided that we're now at this place where the state says, "Yes, we own it, yes, we're responsible to maintain it." There's nothing in this agreement that gets us any different maintenance than they otherwise agree that we should have. So that is status quo, and we don't need this agreement for that. What State Highway is ceding to us in this agreement is things, is language that doesn't exist anywhere else in the state related to permits for utility and review, review and comment on pedestrian signalization changes, signage changes, all those other add-ins that we've been able to chip away at.
Do we have those agreements on all of our other state roads?
No, and it would be the only state road where we have those agreements on State Highway.
Are they ceding to us something that we already possess?
No, they, we don't have any right to comment on, or any process, or any ability to comment on permit applications from utilities.
Do they have any ability to, to preclude our commenting?
We, we don't have access to the information. We don't know what goes into their review.
We have access to state delegates and the state attorneys, and we have the political process that can bring-
Sure, but you realize when a utility comes to a body like State Highway to do utility work, there isn't a legal or Maryland General Assembly piece for that. It's a policy process within the organization, just like, just like it is in the city. If someone wants a permit from the city, they have to apply. We have an application process, a review process, and they, they're granted a permit. So that's the process that State Highway is involved in now that we have no comment over. Now, I'm, I'm fully willing to say that may not be worth it to you. It gives us something that we haven't had before, but it is, it is a bit schizophrenic because it will only be this one little section of road that we have that permission on. We don't get it for Carroll Avenue, we don't get it for New Hampshire Avenue, we don't get it for any other state highway.
So maybe the discussion, it's a long discussion now, should be, or state, state roads through Tacoma Park.
Well, I think the only reason we are here is because of their inaccurate assessment three years ago where they decided they had no maintenance responsibility for 410.
So in some ways, their willingness to give us some things that they don't give anybody else in the state and that they don't give us for any other state highway in the city is kind of a, oops, we-
I think that's a reflection of the political pressure and the community stance that has been taken and the, the attention that we've gotten on this issue.
Right, and they loused up in terms of claiming wrongfully who was responsible and caused us to pay money to do things that they weren't doing and are realizing now that they caused us some undue hardships in that way and are willing to cede these things on this particular piece of roadway.
I mean, it was language that was in the previous agreement as well, so I won't say that it, you know, it suddenly appeared. We were getting, we were asking for comments and review on permits and comments and review on other issues like signalization and pedestrian safety and crosswalk issues and things like that. So that was all part of the mix originally. They have, they have simply changed their view of the rights that they have and the ownership issue. And now we're on a new page with some of the same, same requests included.
And I would like to just say, I want to turn to Ms. Rosenfeld for a question, but I just want to say to Ms. Pierceall, that's what I was talking about when I said I was not misleading you. State Highway changed their approach.
Kick it up, kick it up.
Ms. Rosenfeld, I have a question for you. If we just said, you know, let's drop the whole thing, would we be better off or worse In your opinion, given what you know right now?
In my opinion, given what I know right now, I think you would be better off because I think that those sections of the road right-of-way remain under municipal control. And to the extent that you would allow State Highway to maintain between curb to curb, that would be fine. But you will not concede that State Highway has access to what remains municipal right-of-way. And I think that's your best arsenal against future road widenings because State Highway then would have to come in and condemn those rights of way, which is a politically uncomfortable thing for them to do.
Right. Ms. Silver, I want to get her thoughts, and I'll go to Councilmember Mail.
On a smaller point, I want to go back for a minute. There actually were discussions at the table about expanding some of these- There actually were discussions at the table about expanding some of these MOU ideas around our commentability in all these various areas to other State Highways in Tacoma Park. And we took the position that we were trying to get closure on the 410 issue and we were concerned that broadening it that much all at once might slow down our ability to get to closure. But I do think that it's possible that we could try to expand and make more uniform our understanding throughout the city with State Highway. But I know that's a small issue and I want to get back to it.
And the whole point of that was that we're here, we're close to the situation there in Greenbelt or in Annapolis or wherever they are and don't have the, the close understanding of the conditions of the road and the things that are going on. We can be their eyes and ears and have the ability to get a much better end result for our citizens for State Highway.
Right. And we've always argued that. We didn't get that much traction with them on those points, but recently I had this conversation that they might be interested in looking at other State Highways in Tacoma Park.
Okay.
Not, we're not there, but it, but we could go back to look at that.
Then, so then back to the question.
In terms of this bigger issue of whether a structure of easements and right-of-access agreements along 410 gives us a great deal more protection legally from the ultimate fear of widening is something I think I disagree on. I do, I do understand the legal argument and I'm certainly going to think about it some more. But I, it's not a new argument. We have looked at that. I, I think the, I think the reality is that this road functions as a State Highway. And under current code, therefore can have a great deal of control over it despite the fact that it may not have any conveyance, formal conveyances to State Highway from the city. We don't own that right-of-way either. It was a, in every case, it was, it was, well, not every case, but many cases, it was more of a dedication at the time of the subdivision in each, along the road. It's a public right-of-way that I think is now State Highway's authority. And our goal is to get as much control over that as we can, which is what we've done with this MOU. Some of the language in here will serve us well. And I think the team of city staff that worked on this, I think is, as Ms. Brathwaite said, is actually very pleased that we'll have much more control than we've ever had, much more of a process that we can depend on in terms of working with State Highway in the interest of protecting our own citizens. I don't think there's any need, I'm not saying you did this, Ms. Rosenfeld, but I don't think there's any need, the rain certainly has, of accusing either the mayor or the city attorney of not caring about this community or not wanting to protect it. We are doing the very best we can and we have come up with what we think is a pretty good agreement, which maybe can be better. I'm, I'm surprised, I guess, that there's sort of a either/or or mutually exclusion concept that this is terrible, but easements would be terrific. I think that doesn't, I'm not very convinced.
And, you know, this information, a lot of it, again, is, is very new and very recent. And I, you know, Sue and I have agreed to disagree on, on this issue. And, you know, I do think that it merits some legal analysis and some further advice to the council on which mechanism would best protect you long-term.
And I think it would be helpful to have a continuing discussion between the attorneys about the best way to go forward with this. And I guess I would be willing to offer the sense that the council might want to say that it was worth our while to expend some funds to have Ms. Rosenfeld engage in those conversations with city attorney to be able to work that out and see if there's anything that results from this evening's conversation that we get to a better place in terms of what we want to get back to State Highway with.
Ms. Rosen, I'm happy to, for the mayor and council to be willing to spend money on Ms. Rosenfeld if that is what you think is beneficial. But I really do not think it is wise at all to blur the issue of who represents whom.
I agree.
And, and that, I think it was one of the other council members who said that earlier. I think that would be a very slippery slope to go down.
Yeah, and I wasn't thinking of it as a, as trying to blur the, who represents us. I was looking at it as more as a additional, as I said, brain power working on the issue. But certainly at this point, having you as the city attorney, being the negotiator, until, unless and until the council decided to change that. But I think that Ms. Rosenfeld can be of assistance to the city and, and working with you if you're able to do that.
And I'd, I'd be willing to propose that the next step be that the council have the city attorney and the staff work through some of the points that have been discussed here this evening, explore some of the things that the city attorney has said she wants to consider. And if there is a way for you to consult with Ms. Rosenfeld and if in the two of you consulting, you decide that there's something that we should do that would pay Ms. Rosenfeld for some of her time, if the two of you can propose that. I don't want to impose that on you as some, you know, like we're bringing in somebody to go second chair with you. That's not my proposal. I just wanted to recognize that...
I just want the mayor to know that, that I've called Ms. Rosenfeld early today, very early this morning, I think it was, and said we should talk. And unfortunately, we talked at about seven-ish when I was out and I was shopping for food. And so it was that quality of a conversation.
Right, right.
But I think there's a will between us to, to teach each other and to work together collaboratively. There's no problem with that.
Right, okay. And, and all I'm saying is, I sense that the council would say that if that involved some remuneration for Ms. Rosenfeld, that we would be willing to consider that. But it would be after you had talked through some things and if there was something that seemed like that was what was the right thing to do, we would consider it. But I'm not directing, my sense is that we're not saying, you know, start out with saying, "Okay, come in and do that."
And, and if I could just follow up a little bit on what Sue said, she and I have had conversations periodically throughout this process and I think have been fairly candid with each other on where we agree and where we agree to disagree. So it's not my, I appreciate the council's confidence. It's not my intention or goal in any way to usurp her role in representing the city. We both have spent a lot of time looking at this issue and being, having, having the luxury of time to sit down and discuss these issues at more length, I think, could be very helpful to both of us. And I can tell you that Historic Tacoma has spent a great deal of its funds in helping to bring these legal issues to the council. So I know that that would, that would be a welcome offer from the city if that were available.
Because in the end, I think we all want the best thing for this community. Councilmember Mail.
Question and then a comment. And this was the point I was raising before. Are there legal issues with regard to representing two clients or coming into the meetings with two clients? Is that, and I'm just asking a question, I don't know.
There are questions of whether or not there might be a conflict. Many conflicts could be waived, whether or not that presents itself at this time. I, I think right now the views of the two parties really are largely in, in agreement. But that's something that I would need to discuss, of course, with my client at the time, Historic Tacoma, and see, see where they are with respect to the scope of representation.
And you just have a process of resolving whatever conflicts there would be?
Again, I just, you know, I think it's a different question that might be helpful. I don't think the issue should even be whether Michelle should represent the city, period. I think the question is whether two lawyers should put their heads together, which is a very different question. I know a number of council members did raise this as if there should be a special council. And I guess I want to say very strongly that, that at least I would appreciate the ability to comment on that in confidence at another time. That's a brand-new issue for me, but it has lots of ramifications in terms of ethics and professionalism. But the thing that is easy for us to do and we could decide to do tonight is the two of us can put our heads together and talk, talk law and talk shop and talk what might be some creative thing that we haven't come up with yet.
And I'm just raising the issue of when you do that, but you're both on the same pay, the payer is the same whether there's any issues?
I don't think there is. You can, you can easily pay for another party's attorney if you chose to without that becoming your attorney. It happens all the time in, in other cities.
Excellent.
And that's, and that's why...
But it would be different if Michelle was being asked to come to negotiate, which I forget which person suggested that might be a possibility. I would appreciate the opportunity to talk with you all as my client about the pros and cons of that.
All right.
So continuing on the comment, the, anyone who runs to serve on council cares about Tacoma Park. And comments from the public often get personal, which is unfortunate in a place like Tacoma Park where we try to be a community. I've lived in the city for 10 years. My first service publicly, public service was on the Safe Roadways Committee. I take my children across 410 every day. And I know the risks of crossing the two-lane road that it is now. I bike my bike with a broken back that I have from a bike accident years ago down 410. And so I know the risks of 410. And I know well the history of Tacoma Park fighting previous road widening and highway proposals. And so the questions that were, that are being asked tonight are how do we get the best outcome for the community? There are different ways to do that. And we're differing in a discussion, not a decision. There is no decision on the deck tonight from the council, a discussion about this agreement. We were discussing what information do we have available to us now? An incomplete amount of information, which is what you have heard from councilmembers say tonight. And we've differed and we've discussed about the strategy to get there, the different provisions that you put into agreements or not, the different routes we take or not, the SHAs, various positions over time and what they wanted. I don't think that there's any, I know there is no one on this council, we have met many times about this issue in just the year that I have been on council, that is not thinking about the issue of road widening. I am also representing all of my constituents, though, and they care about the issues of road widening. They care about the issues of Verizon or other utilities digging up their yards without any notice whatsoever, not repairing those holes, not replanting those holes, not fixing damaged walls. They care deeply about issues like that. They care about the issues of sidewalks and maintenance and trees that the, that the city manager brought up before. They have all those issues in mind. And so, serving on council, I try to represent all of those issues and bring all that feedback to bear when I'm asking questions about, trying to give a sense of direction and trying to, to coordinate with my peers on the council and with constituents and residents about what to do. And that's the approach that this council has taken in my one year up here and in my experience at this council in previous years as well. So just wanted to say that, that it's far better as a community to work as a community and to maintain that trust and relationship than it is to, to not do so.
Sounds like it will be a very collaborative process because it sounds like you're in agreement.
Thank you, ma'am.
Do the city attorney and the city manager need additional clarification from the council?
Yes. I don't think we got what we need to get, no.
Okay.
I think we, we had a good sort of countervailing vision of what might happen instead of this MOU, but I don't think we got much direction about some of the specifics that we, we don't know what the majority wants to, to do. We, we had a very good, I think, overview. And now I think at some point we would need to go back and find out much more specifically what needs to be done at the table to negotiate with SHA. And maybe we don't need to do that tonight. Maybe there does need to be more homework before we can get there.
Yeah, I think we put a number of questions on the table, request for more information and look back at the previous minutes, the way previous minutes. And, and also kind of looking at what's the alternative of not having any agreement at this point? And what's the alternative of including all state roads? I mean, there's a lot of ideas been batted around tonight and I think it would be good to, to get that all kind of organized and come back to us.
And we will figure out the timing for that. My sense is that we would like to come back to that as soon as possible, but not so soon that we don't have a, a sense, a sense of what those pieces should be. So it may, it may take kind of looking, looking at notes from the, from the conversation and coming up with a list like, maybe, maybe it's a list of, you know, five things where it's like, okay, does the, how does the council feel about questions about the, the right-of-way versus the curb piece? Or, or the first one of, you know, agreement versus no agreement? And, and the reasons being, you know, utilities and permits and all that kind of stuff? And if, say, a decision point of, okay, do you want a new agreement or don't you want a new agreement? Is it important to have these pieces? Then if you do want those pieces, here are some of the things that came up about whether we want to try for, you know, having us do the tree work. And another one of those bigger decisions might be, how important is it if we can, if we do want to go forward with an agreement with these things that we think are advantageous? How much do we want to try and make whatever we're doing about the template for other State Highways in the city? So that there are some bigger picture items to answer first and then once we pick those bigger answers, then we have smaller details? Is that, is that a good way to approach it?
I don't know. I think I'm a little lost. I think that it would be useful for me to maybe sit down with Sue and just go through and, and just kind of assemble our notes from today's meeting and just, and see, you know, what things are just easily provided to you in terms of information? And then, and then some kind of a strategy for, for what we bring back to you because I...
That's fair.
They're very different kinds of questions, so I guess...
All, all I want to do is say that...
I'd like to get it, I'd like to see it organized on a piece of paper, so I know what to do with it.
Right. And so all I'll say is, I'll commit to putting it on, back on the schedule as soon as we can, once there's some agreement about the, the best thing, the best structure to bring back for some next, next discussion and what information we need for that.
And then do we add a piece, do we, tonight want to do a vote on allocating some funds for the...
It's, it sounds like the best thing to do tonight is to encourage the two concerned, the two attorneys to talk with each other. And if there's a proposal for anything like that, the attorneys will come back to us with that. But at this point, our intent is to encourage them to talk and it sounds like they want to do that. Is that...
Can I just add one more comment that, that it relates to the information that's missing or that we, that I at least have seen? And that is that I guess I'm most concerned about whether there's anything in the 1930s era file that indicates that the city is sort of clearly ceding to the road authority at the time and now State Highways, that they have the full rights to do the road-related work that they want within the right-of-way. So if that's clear in any way, I guess that, that would concern me because that's sort of what we're trying to fight, right? Is there an expansive authority within the right-of-way?
That's easy. We can give you what there is. There's all the, the land documents. I can get those to you all tomorrow and the, and the two pages of minutes and that's all there is. of minutes, and that's all there is. What's also true is there's-
But the clerk also referred to whether there might be other material in backing up from that.
If she went back for a year, you're asking her to try to go deeper.
We can look and see if there's something else.
And I'll volunteer to start looking at that tomorrow.
My guess, by the way, is it's not going to be a straight line, that it's going to be pretty checkered, because what we do know is there's a memo in 47 that says, oh, no, no, the city still owns this piece, it's not state highway, and then there's a memo some other year that says the opposite. So it's the same kind of experience we had in our recent years, where at one point we thought state highway, thought they had full responsibility, and then they had none, and now they're taking it back again. So it's not going to be a clear anything. It's going to be some kind of a mix. But we can certainly give you what we have, and you'll see that with your own eyes.
Councilmember Schultz.
I guess I have one question, and that is that if it's possible for you to work out a strategy, perhaps together, is to ascertain to what degree the state has a vested interest in having an agreement or not at this point. Be curious, I don't know if you know that, because that question probably hasn't come up until tonight. You know, my presumption was that they didn't when I was making my remarks earlier, but it may be that I'm wrong, and that in fact, this is something that's very important to the state. If you could maybe deduce that in some way or another, that might be a useful piece of information.
What I would appreciate, not tonight, I think we're all probably beyond that, but is to, once we've sort of gone back to the more basic questions of what kind of an agreement we want, if we want an agreement at all, should it be sort of something around formal conveyances and easements, or something more along these lines? I guess I would like more response to the text of the rest of the agreement. I don't know whether the clauses that we've written are good ones and are helpful, whether some of the procedures having to do with the, a lot of the things the staff is very excited about, we haven't gotten much feedback from you, which isn't to say it's controversial. In fact, it might be that if you voted, you would be in favor of those things. But we haven't heard one way or the other, so we don't sort of know. I think, at least I feel like we don't have much footing for this thing that was in front of you tonight, as to how you really feel about it. We heard a lot of stern and drawn about, you know, the widening, but, you know, concern that everybody has ultimately. But I don't think we've gotten enough feedback, frankly, about what we've already, what we have here, so we would know how to, see if we could improve it. I have a lot of ideas of how I'd like to improve it, but I have no idea which things you would like to improve.
Speaking for myself, I would say that, you know, coming into tonight, we had some goals that we had set that we wanted to accomplish with this agreement, and then after this discussion tonight, I realized that maybe we, I need to reevaluate those goals of what they are, that if the state does own that road, then, you know, that was one of the, getting them to maintain it was one of the big, the primary goal that I had. And so, you know, it's like, yeah, those things are important, we need to go through those, but I think for myself, it was a little overwhelming tonight, you know, with all the discussion and kind of the way things have changed so much, that I agree we can back to those details, but I think it's too much for tonight.
I certainly appreciate that.
But just to clarify, you did hear from councilmember Grimes and myself on many of the provisions within the existing agreement.
Yes, but I didn't get a majority vote.
Yep.
And I think there was, I sensed general consensus that where there were things pointed out, where certain sections had it, but other sections didn't, in terms of the notice and the, and the period for comment, that those kinds of things that everybody was looking for, if those were included, that they'd be universal in the sections. Thank you all. We will revisit this again, and we'll take a short break. We don't have to do the committee procedures discussion follow-up, so my sense is we'll do item number four and call it a night.
This may actually be very quick. One of the things that we look at every fall is what local legislation we may want to put forward through the Montgomery County or the Bye County, let, local delegations. These would be bills that would usually just affect Tacoma Park, Montgomery County, or Montgomery County and Prince George's County. The last, I have not heard that there's anything in particular that people want to put forward on this, either from staff or from council, but there may be, somebody may have some ideas on that. Most of the legislation that, ideas that I've been hearing about are more statewide general legislation that we would be promoting through the process, through the general session. The local legislation gets debated earlier, gets debated in December, it has public hearings in December, and there's some early discussion, but final action on those even doesn't move forward until the general session begins in mid-January. So if we do have some local legislation that we want to investigate, we need to talk to our delegates to get that on their agenda, to get written up and submitted, I think it's by the October 4th guaranteed bill deadline. If it's a little bit later than that, they can usually get approval to move forward on it, but it's useful for us to turn it around quickly so that we're not putting our delegates in an awkward situation. Does anyone have anyone that they, any item that they wanted to pursue?
Let me just first say that examples of what we've done in the past, one is unification, and another one is the liquor license for the off-sale.
Yeah, various alcoholic beverage items.
And do you have anything to report in terms of an update on that? Do we know about anything that has transpired since that past last session?
Nothing has happened. We do need to have some more conversations with the county. The bill does have a sunset provision that lasts another year, so one of the things, if we decide we want to continue to keep that liquor license, next year we'll need to go back and ask that the sunset provision be removed, which there would be no problem.
And we asked for the sunset so that we could have a chance to evaluate, to see if we thought there were problems that we could sunset it.
Right. That's right.
Have there been applications?
No, there have been none.
How many eligible establishments are there? Do you have a figure?
You know, I think there's probably about six, but the, I don't think that it's, just the way that, from what I've understood, it ends up not being attractive for the, for those.
I have a hard time, we're a bit off the topic here, I have a hard time imagining most of the establishments wanting to sell beer and wine for takeout.
In addition to the-
It just doesn't fit well with their layouts and their current service offerings.
So that's, yeah, so that's existing in terms of-
So it sounds like we will have to come back to that particular one either now or even earlier than now, in a year, so that we know what we want to ask for.
That's right.
That one's definitely going to have to, either we do nothing or we ask to remove the sunset. And I'll just point out that I don't know what percentage of bills in Annapolis deal with alcohol, but it's a lot higher percent than you would think.
That's a lot. The other thing that, the other topic that's often covered in local legislation has to do with planning. Anything that's park and planning related does need to go through the Bye County Committee. So we have zoning or park-related things that might need general assembly action, or if it's something related to WSSC, those are, those are items that go through local legislation.
Councilmember Mail.
If we wanted legislation associated with the entrance of Flower Avenue on Sliger Creek Parkway, would that be an example of something that's-
Yes. If there was something that local, that a bill would advance-
Transfer ownership of that area to the city for the purposes of narrowing the roadway, or, this is, sorry, councilmember Schultz, this is the, when Flower Avenue comes out and touches Sliger Creek Parkway-
Oh, the bottom that-
Expands into a giant apron of concrete. And the city staff have been working diligently with the planning commission to try to figure out just what steps we'll need to take next to make that project move forward. It looks like it's going to involve a fairly complicated engineering study, and also has before that can even happen, I think, if I'm understanding correctly, it's going to have to get on the sort of queue for the planning commission to review and give their okay to, which may take some, many months or years of time. So it's an issue that could be with us for a long time if we don't find some way to expedite it or help the planning commission prioritize it.
You know, I will think about a way that local legislation could help on that, one that's not coming to mind right away. The two things that happen, sometimes just by putting it on the local legislation agenda list, it encourages people to move on things, and then it gets taken off before, you know, just kind of gets withdrawn, and we've used that before. Another option, but the other, the other aspect is if it does require a bill, and it's something we decide to pursue, generally it's not effective until, you know, next year, July or October, just the nature of when, when the things become effective. So it's not, it's not for expediting purposes, but it, unless it's simply a political persuasion. So I'll look into it.
Second issue, I can't remember if everybody's aware of this, there was a sewage leak from the line under Old Carroll Avenue that went on for, I think, two weeks, and the city public works was in the process of repaving Old Carroll. Just before they were about to start that paving, I think a citizen started the process to make the city aware, I'm not sure exactly who found out, but thankfully the city stopped putting on new pavement before WSSC came out and ripped up the pavement. But that's, that's a constituent emailed delegate Tom Hucker about this issue, and I was in the loop on that, and it started this discussion about are there things we would want WSSC to do with regard to-